Okay. The special meeting of the city council meeting is back in session. Mr. City Manager and Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything, anything to report out?
Very briefly, the council met in close session, considered three items, two items to anticipate litigation and one regarding a claim filed on Mr. McCray. No reportable action was taken on any item. Thank you.
Okay, then we are concluding our meet, our special meeting, and I'll adjourn that. And now I will call the regular meeting into session. This is quite nice. There won't benefit to the Zoom and the pandemic. Okay, we're back in, in session, and will the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Johnston. Mayor Pro Tem Blatz. Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney. Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay. Already opened with a pledge in the special meeting. How about the approval of the agenda? I have one change I'd like to make, which is to move item number five, the reach amendment, up to the first discussion item because of the number of people who are presented that's going to be here. Take care of that. Is there any other changes?
Mayor, there were two items in the consent calendar that Susan and I would like to pull item H for discussion on the fences, walls, and hedges. And there's a comment I wanted to make on item J on the MOU at the Memorial Garden. I'm okay with taking those up after the reach code if you wish to because of the number of people, if that's okay with the city attorney.
Oh, we, yeah, we have the fire chief or the retired fire chief is here. Okay, so.
Malcolm and Haney would like to pull H also.
Okay, so the agenda is approved with the realignment on item number five to come up first, and we're holding H and J in advance.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consented calendar?
So moved. So moved.
Seconded? Okay, any objection? If none, the calendar is approved. Let's go to what, let's go to the, there's a public presentation, and we have fire warden and retired fire chief of Ventura County and one of our leading citizens, Bob Roper, who has graciously offered to come down and talk to us a little bit about fire season and his perspective on what's been going on in the state and what we might think about doing. So with that, is Bob out there?
I'm out here. Can you hear me okay?
I can. Can we see you?
No, I'm hidden tonight.
Okay, you're, you're a very smart man.
This is more about the message.
Okay.
So what I always ask for is to give you a 10-minute analysis of the question is, are we ready as a city for wildfires that may impact us? So, you know, the answer is not really. If you look at Ohio history, back in 1917, none of us were here, but we had one of the largest fires that burnt down the Foothill Hotel, which many of you may not know it was up by Fairview Lane, and it burnt all the way down into the Arbolata, destroying many homes in its path. And during that, since then, we've had 12 major fires with the 2017 Thomas Fire leaving us in what we call the donut hole. The question is, is why did we survive and not become like the town of Paradise in Northern California? And that was simply is because on the third day of the fire, when the fire was coming in, the wind shifted. But what we have to understand is, is the fire department has limited resources, and we as citizens of this city and this area, we have to do our part to protect our own structures and stuff because there may not be enough airplanes or fire trucks to put around the city to defend it. So that's what we're here tonight to talk about. What I'd like to show you is a quick three-minute video for people to understand that it's not the flames necessary that destroy a community. It's the ember environment. The Institute for Business and Home Safety has a wind tunnel in South Carolina that the fire service, we helped them construct. It's designed to, to test hurricane-force winds, but they've also built a fire chamber inside. So what you'll see is the embers material being put in here. It's burning, and what you'll see is the embers coming out. This is real-life experience, what's happening to firefighters around. So they built this home. It's on a turntable. They put vegetation, wood, mulch around the home, just like we have at ours. And then this generator throws the embers at the house. And what you'll see now is as these embers are hitting the house, there are some components of the house that are built out of fire-resistant materials and other materials that are prone to spreading a fire. So what you'll see is the wood, the wood mulch at the bottom start igniting. You'll see in the rain gutters, the leaf litter that's in those. You'll see the valley of the roof start catching fire. In this case, they're using pine straw, but it could just be oak leaves up on the roof. This is real life, how fires are spread. It's not the humongous fires that you see, flames that you see on TV. It's the embers coming in. And this is important to understand because you can walk around a house and you can begin to see how a small ember can start a fire at your house and with no fire truck there, what's going to happen. On this house, they had vinyl rain gutters. They also had vinyl siding. The mulch is burning. Again, the leaf litter on the roof. So it tells us that we have to do things like remove the mulch around our house, put rocks in that zero-to-five-foot zone around there. Look at the type of screens we have on our windows. And you'll also be able to see here on an attic vent in the next series with embers going into the attic. These are things that start small incipient fires at a house that could have been taken care of before the firestorm hit. This is what happened in the town of Paradise. It wasn't the flame front. It was the embers igniting one house, and then one house, in some cases, or a mobile home park up there, went from one structure to the next structure to the next structure. You'll see here on the vinyl siding how it's, how it's melting and burning down. On the left-hand side, that's concrete siding, and it's not igniting. This, this next view is the attic vents. And attic vents are great because you need the ventilation in your attic, but modern building codes now have changed the size of the screen. That means that somebody should go up on the older home and change the screen size so that the embers can't be going through. The new codes work for new homes, but the largest inventory of our danger are the existing homes in our community. Vinyl windows are great, but they also help carry fire. So this is a short demonstration so people can see what a firefighter actually is seeing with the flying embers, and you can begin to understand what the role is that we all have to play. There's long-term actions that we can take, and there are short-term actions that we must take. It's the personal responsibility that each property owner, renter, occupant in the city needs to take care of. The first thing we need to do is, if you get that annual notice from the fire department about getting 100-foot clearance for your defensible space, do it. Check with the fire department, either online or go down to the fire station and get your copy of the Ready, Set, Go brochure. Make sure your address is legible in front of your house. Not a gang of mailboxes, but an address. Make sure your trees are trimmed up so our fire engine responders can get to your house. Try to do some of the home hardening if you can. Remove the firewood next to your house that you put it there to keep it dry. You don't want embers to get into that firewood pile. You want to make sure that you clean your roof and your rain gutters because you can see by the video how the embers do that. Close your windows when there's a red flag day and it's hot. Have your air conditioning running is great. Take your patio furniture cushions away. Storm in your garage or somewhere. Again, you don't want to transfer the fire to your house. And lastly, that mulch around your home, either irrigate it very well or consider removing that. And look at your ornamental vegetation, like Italian cypresses people have near their home. Those are like, like a matchstick. Make sure you sign up for alert notifications through the county and make sure that you're ready to evacuate when law enforcement tells you you need to go. The biggest thing you need to do is maintain your home. You need to actually learn to defend your home before the fire gets there by taking simple actions. If you do that today, your family will be safer, your home will be safer, and you need to know that you need to help your neighbors and those who cannot help themselves. From the simple standpoint, if your neighbor has an issue next door, their house catches on fire, if it's density of the homes are close enough, it can go from one home to another. That's why this is an important message for community members to understand we have to help each other. For further reference information, please go to the VenturaCounty.org Ready, Set, Go program that you can find, and also with the Ojai Fire Safe Council with their website that's listed here. The last website is from the video that has a lot of great information there for you. So that concludes my message. I want you to know that, you know, it's nice that the Thomas Fire burnt the vegetation, but I have to tell you this, that it, the area is ready to burn again because it doesn't take long with Mother Nature with rain to regrow our fuels. So thank you for the time tonight.
Okay, well, thank you, Bob. And Bob, you're currently, what, are you the president or chairman of the fire, the state fire, state council?
Yeah, I'm the co-chairman of the California Fire Safe Council, and then I'm also a policy advisor to the Western Fire Chiefs Association.
Okay, well, we really appreciate you coming and talking to us. I have one question for you, or you don't have to answer it tonight, but we have had requests over the last few years for modification or amendments to fire maps. And the two questions that I ask, and I think most of the council has been asking, which is, how does, how does a fire map necessarily make us safer? And what impact does it have on the ability to even get fire insurance? Is that something that at some point you would be comfortable in giving us some guidance on?
Yeah, I'd be happy to come back and give you a briefing on that. Plus Senator Jackson had a recent legislation that attaches itself to the maps that CalFire maintains, so I can give you an update on that.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Does any member of the council have a question for Bob?
Mayor, Bob, is this, is this a video available for the city, for the city to have and to download on, on our website?
Yes, James Hahn, who I've worked with, he has it, the file. So he has it right now. Plus, it's available on the IBHS website.
Okay, and it's now part of the minutes in the archives of our council meeting, which is recorded, and you can get it on the Internet. Susan, did I hear your voice?
Yes. People have been wondering if Ojai, if we have an evacuation plan, and it doesn't seem to be enough to tell them that the plan depends on where the fire is. What, what is the, our evacuation plan? Is, and can, can there even be an evacuation plan? Or is it more an issue of a communication plan?
Is that directed at me or staff?
No, at you.
Okay.
Or anyone who can answer it.
Well, I would have to say that you're almost exactly right. I can't answer about, is there a citywide evacuation plan? But because of the dynamics of a fire and what could else be happening around the area, we know in Ojai, you basically have three routes, 33, 150 west, 150 east. And what really has to happen is get the information out to the public because if a fire cuts off one, you only have two other ways to get out. And we've had situations happen like during the Thomas Fire where we had basically everything cut off. So it does become a communication plan on how to inform the public on which are the best routes out, and that is a dynamic issue.
And I can add two things to that from the emergency, the disaster council says, that Bob has described, we only really have basically three escape routes. There's a fourth, but you generally don't want to go into the Los Padres National Forest during a fire because the odds are not in your favor. But the sheriff's office and the Highway Patrol have worked together back when Chief Reihoff was here, and they have a coordination plan for in the event of a fire that's moving in towards the town itself. Those people who haven't already evacuated, they will then call a mandatory, and it'll be a one-way, whichever the safest route is. There are, will be circumstances like the chief Roper said, where you won't be able to get out, in which case Soul Park, the high school, open areas with grass are where people need to go. It's hard to keep everybody's attention. The information's available. It's not as simple as saying, this is the plan and you'll all be safe. We're not really ready as this whole thing started. It depends on each of us as citizens helping each other, our neighbors, and being prepared ourselves. Any other questions? If not, well, Bob, thank you very much for the time and the info. And we will invite you back on the value and what kind of fire amendments to the map, particularly at the state level, to see what they've done. So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are getting close to the bewitching hour. Now, let's see, we got a little time. We can take up a couple of those items that we pulled off the calendar before public communication. So we have H, second reading.
Mayor, in terms of efficiency of time, my comment on item J is very short, and we may be able to dispose of that in five minutes.
Okay, let's deal with J.
All right, it's your pleasure. On measure, on item J, the only comment I have, and I've shared this concern with James and, and no Brown Act violation also with Randy. On attachment B, page three of five, where it says, "Maintenance and repairs", and it says, "Children's Memorial shall have sole responsibility for scheduling and providing ground maintenance and repair services, excluding maintenance of the existing oak trees to be completed by city." I don't want there to be the language in any way to imply that the Memorial Garden people would be free without coordination with the city to remove other kinds of trees and vegetation. In other words, I think, you know, it's not just oak trees that are valuable specimen vegetation. I just think that we ought to make sure maybe we don't have a, you know, incorrect implication with the word "sole", and understand that that's a joint, and it also has to be coordinated through the city in terms of vegetation changes and landscaping changes. That's my only comment.
Okay, well, yeah, man, it's a good point, and it does cut both ways, no pun intended. We as a city went in there after the garden group thought it was sort of a secret garden because it was nice, you know, it's vegetated. It was, in a way, overgrown. But it was, it was pretty private, and it made for a nice venue. But we, the Public Works crews, I guess, must have been, came in and decided to clear the area for maybe fire prevention or whatever.
Actually, the Memorial Garden people did a lot of that clearing.
Well, they did too. Yeah, right. You and I were both down there watching them do something.
You and I were there doing that.
Yeah, right. So I think that it should be a cooperative effort.
Right.
You know, or consultation as to what gets removed or doesn't get removed on both our sides so that if there's a question as to desirability of keeping something that maybe otherwise would be removed, I think the garden people should get a chance to weigh in on it too, so.
Absolutely. I just wanted to be clear. It's a joint effort there. That's all. I want to make sure that the language did not imply unilateral action.
Okay, you need, you got that, Mr. City Manager? Any other comments or objection or support? If not, okay. Do we have a motion to approve J?
I'll approve, I measure J as amended.
Okay, I'll second it. Any objection? All in favor? Aye, okay. So what, how are we doing on time? Is, is H going to take a little bit more time? Should we hold that off?
It will take time.
Yeah, okay. So we'll then go, rather than to open up lengthy discussion, let's take a, some public comments. We might even be able to get through them. The city clerk, do you have any public communications for topics not on the agenda?
There's one speaker who wants to speak during public communications.
Okay, are they available now?
Yes.
Okay, well, invite them in.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you, can you hear me?
We can. Gary?
Hi, good evening. Do I have the ability to share, share a screen? Or is it, is it just talking?
I don't know, Mr. City Manager.
I believe, I don't think we're set up to share the screen with, with the panelists or with the guest speakers, I'm sorry.
Okay, I can, I can talk you through then. Just, just to start, thank you, Mr. Mayor Johnson and the council for, for having me. Just briefly to introduce myself and the family, we are the Duncan family. We, we've been living here in Ojai for about three years now, so going on four years. And, excuse me, one second. Just trying to get back to my screen. So the issue that I have on hand is we purchased our property, 305 Palomar Road in, in the Arbolata neighborhood. And when we purchased the property, there was a hedge that was on the, right on the edge of the road. Recently, we were informed and through the drought that that hedge was a fire hazard and had to be removed. So we took the, the effort to remove that hedge, replanted a hedge that was, in fact, about five feet back from the edge of the road, and we put a small stone wall in front of that hedge. And I have a presentation with several pictures and so on, so forth. That said, we were informed by the city planner driving by that he felt as though we had potential encroachment issues on city property with both the wall and the hedge. That was, of course, very surprising to us given that, one, we hadn't had the property surveyed. When we purchased it, the existing hedge was, was on the street. And, and, and quite frankly, in the Arbolata, it seems like everybody's wall and/or hedge is in, is on the edge of the street. So we were very surprised by that. We went and, and had the property surveyed, and we are in fact encroaching on the city property with the wall and the hedge. We've invested thousands of dollars, quite frankly, $30,000 in total in the project between the wall and the new hedge. And we've been told that we have to take the hedge down and take the wall down. So I'm here tonight to ask for your guidance and really to understand what the options are aside from that, if there are any, given where we are, and certainly asking for just fair and equal treatment. As we look around the neighborhood, I think 19 of the 30 houses on our street have some sort of encroachment issues that seem to be very obvious. So at this point, we're, we're wondering what the intent of the city would be to have us tear it down if, in fact, that's not being enforced across the neighborhood. Our intent was certainly not to encroach. It was an accident. It was a mistake. We intended to improve the property, and I think we've done that. But at this point, we're, we're at a loss. I'm just asking the committee if have options beyond what would be really a total loss for us, which is tearing the wall and the hedge down.
Mayor? Well, I'll respond to it. The, under public communications, Mr. Duncan, you know, the council's not allowed to discuss or to engage in discussion. They may have some questions, I don't know. But I would suggest that Mr. City Manager, if you'd have staff meet with Mr. Duncan and see what, if there are any extenuating circumstances and what the options are.
And Mayor, I would just like to point out, just to remind us that this has come up before, and that to remind staff that there is some precedent for arrangements in these situations that we could be researched. And I would urge that, that research be done in terms of working with Mr. Duncan.
Okay, got it. And we'll follow up with, with Mr. Duncan in this week.
Okay, thank you, Gary, for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you all. Appreciate the time.
City clerk, do we have any other public communications?
No, that's the only one.
Okay, and so if that is the only public communication we have, we can now go back to the consent calendar. Bill, were you the one that pulled it H? Or no, is it H?
Yes, I did. I, I'll start out. I think all three of us did. Susan and I, again, no Brown Act violation. Susan and I have talked about this matter.
Let the DA be the judge of that, but go ahead.
Well, two is not a, is not, you know. We jointly agree that there are some issues. And I think that, I, I just want to start out by saying, preface my remarks by saying that I really think that the, one of the problems that we need to address tonight, and probably it's going to require some changes to the text and therefore continue the, the item because, you know, we can't go to a second reading if we're going to be changing the, the text for a first reading. But I think that the, the core problem here is that, and I'm hearing loud and clear from the community, that they want a living thing, a hedge, treated differently than the, a non-living thing in terms of these regulations. And so therefore lumping together and putting together fences and walls and screening in the same category as hedges is, is a core of a lot of problems that we have in terms of the, the community buying in and understanding what we're doing. And so I have some suggestions that would, in effect, separate hedges, something that's living, from something that is built. You know, the, the walls and, and fences and screening. And I'm, I'm prepared to go through them, but I just wanted to say that's the principle by which I, I start in terms of looking at this.
Okay, well, before you go further, City Attorney Matt, is, is this a resolution or an ordinance? Is it part of the public hearing process that would require us to have these suggested changes? It seems to me if the council's in agreement, we could postpone this or to.
Perhaps continue to a full, re-agendize in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've held the public hearing, so you can make changes. But if the changes are as substantive as it sounds like they might be, it might be reasonable to have another public hearing on those changes.
Right.
And then continue it for that purpose. The other option would be, depending on the council's feelings, you could have, I direct the, the two who polled it or the two who indicated they want to make changes to work with staff on a revised version and come back in a new public hearing.
Well, I will, I will move, move, we go in that direction because I think it, I'm not ready to vote for it as it's presented tonight.
I support that. Can we work, I would, if, if, would council give us permission to work with staff to, is that what you said?
That's would be my recommendation.
The motion will be to postpone, and you don't need permission to do it. You can just do it, work with staff.
And you and I, as two council members, can get with staff and present our ideas. I know Randy had a comment, but that's, that's where I'm coming from.
And I'll have a comment too. Randy, did you want to say something?
Yeah, well, I agree that we should, I think it's going to pretty go, it's going to go pretty in-depth, especially when we're trying to differentiate in regards to safety, something living and something that's manufactured. That's an interesting conversation. But more importantly, mine, I'm going to, I'm going to talk to lots sizes and lot differentials that we have in this community. So I would enjoy having the time to talk to Matt and planning and.
Okay, so it sounds like support. Ryan, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I voted against this. I thought we did a poor job. I didn't like the way it was before, so I'm in complete agreement of redoing it. That's why I said no. And I want to say that one thing, this council seems to forget that when this hedge issue came up before, it, nobody talked about it. When the enforcement went out a few years ago, everybody got so upset that the city declared an emergency to not enforce the rule they had just passed. At the meeting we had where we passed this, nobody showed up to talk about it. And it's not surprising to me at all that now, guess what? As soon as you guys talk about wanting to enforce this new rule, now we're retreading backwards. So I think it's very good opportunity to wait till we get some more public input because this is obviously an issue people are missing on the frontline that they're never going to be happy with on the back end. that they're never going to be happy with on the back end. So maybe we can do some amendment, make it a little bit...
Right, better outreach.
We didn't need a crystal ball to know that that will happen as soon as you start enforcement. And the blessing of having you on the council is you could tell if you told us so.
Every once in a while, Johnny, that's a lot.
My only comment, Bill, on this thing about the difference between, you know, what did you call it, built?
Hedges are a living green, a living green organism. Fences, walls and screens are not.
Right, and fences, walls and screens generally don't move around a whole lot until they fall down from lack of maintenance. Whereas the growing things, as we know, if just walk down any street in this town, Mr. Duncan is correct in a lot of, you know, wanting fair treatment. The growing thing, if the person, if the adjacent property owner doesn't take care of it, it can become a safety problem.
And I think, yeah, safety has to be paramount. I agree.
So I bless you too. We've been at this before I got on the council, and I'm retiring in December. So it's, I leave it in your capable hands. So is there any objection to postponing this? When will you be bringing it back?
We can bring it back next meeting, right, Bill?
I believe so, yes.
So the motion then is to postpone to the time certain of, what is it, the 27th or whatever the next meeting is?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, any objection to that? If not, so ordered.
Randy agrees to.
Yeah, okay, good.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay, so that will now bring us to probably the, what I, the major feature for the evening. And this, I'm responsible for those who are unhappy with this. I put the reach amendment on the council agenda because I think it is a topic that is overdue to be discussed. I understand why people maybe would rather not dive into this, but out of respect for our climate committee and the fact that if we, it's sort of a test as to our will or our interest in the climate change issue. You know, if there's a thing they call the rule of holes. When you find yourself in one, stop digging. And I think that at least people who believe that there is a climate change issue, and they do believe that it is substantially caused by a carbon footprint brought about by gas and oil, that to continue building structures that, you know, range in estimates of like 30 to 40% or something, adding to the problem, that we ought to at least not to tell people now that, you know, they've got to spend a lot of money, but to say, let's quit making the same problem worse in the future on our new construction. So that's why it's here. And I'd like to introduce Michelle Leahy Ellison, who is the Chair of the Climate Committee. She's going to introduce our presenter, who is going to give us kind of an overview of the, what this is about so that we'll start the conversation. So Michelle, are you out there?
I'm here. Can you see me and hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Johnston and council members. I'm Michelle Ellison, Chair of the Ojai Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee, which was formed and appointed by council last year following the city's declaration of a climate emergency. I'm joined this evening by my fellow committee members, Jim Selman, Steve Colome and Phil White. Brian Holly is unable to be with us. The committee is tasked with identifying key ways for the city to reduce emissions and sequester carbon in an effort to mitigate further climate breakdown. The city of Ojai has demonstrated remarkable leadership on climate action. Ojai was the first city in the county to declare a climate emergency and has led the way with the adoption of 100% renewable electricity with Clean Power Alliance and the program for electrification of landscape equipment. Natural gas and buildings is the second largest source of emissions in Ojai behind transportation. One way to begin weaning ourselves off of gas is with reach codes for new construction. A reach code is a local building energy code that reaches beyond the state minimum requirements for energy use in buildings. Because the electrical grid is rapidly heading towards zero carbon emissions, there's a strong climate argument to be made for electrifying everything, including buildings. While the emission reduction resulting from electrification code change would be modest because Ojai is expected to have only modest new construction, adopting a reach code would enable Ojai to again lead by example. We've invited Amy Ryder of the Building Decarbonization Coalition for a presentation and to answer any questions you may have. Amy assists local governments across California with their building electrification efforts. Following Amy's presentation, I'll provide the climate committee's recommendations for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Ellison, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for having me this evening. I have a fairly brief presentation for you. That is a high-level overview of zero emission buildings, their benefits, and the mechanism that is available in the state of California that would allow Ojai to adopt a movement on new construction projects in particular. And I'm happy to, happy to share that with you here momentarily. So give me one second as we get our technology in the line. We will go for that. All right. Can you see my screen? Fantastic. So as Ms. Ellison mentioned, this presentation is a summary from the Building Decarbonization Coalition for whom I am a consultant and going to give you just this overview. But first, in case you've never heard of the Building Decarbonization Coalition, I just wanted to give you a quick introduction because we are a membership-based, not-for-profit, California-centric, and we represent a variety, more than 100 different agencies that include utilities, local governments, NGOs, manufacturers, as well as the design community. So that includes Southern California Edison and the Electric Power Research Institute and others who we may have heard of across the industry. And hopefully that gives you some insight as to who I am. And I've been managing the local government efforts that we'll talk about shortly in terms of reach codes in particular and really just bringing education to local governments because you have sort of a unique position that allows you to set the stage for this new movement towards zero emission buildings. So really what that means, zero emission buildings, has to do with building electrification. And so we're going to spend a few minutes in talking about why, why that works and how it works. So specifically, the greenhouse gas emissions in the state of California today are roughly 24%, about a quarter, related to buildings. Now, that number is higher in Ojai simply because you don't have heavy industry there, but it is significant. And as again, Ms. Ellison mentioned, the second in line in terms of the highest emissions, right behind single-use vehicles. And the good news is that electric, electrification works because electricity is getting cleaner. We know how to make the electric grid cleaner. There are good examples all over the state, and Clean Power Alliance is a great example. And Ojai is already ahead of the curve because you've adopted their 100% renewable standard. And so you're well on your way and actually on the adoption curve faster than many other cities in the country and certainly in the state. So this is just an example of we're slowly over time expecting electricity to get cleaner and cleaner. You're already there. But we don't yet know how to get the emissions out of gas. And so that's really what electrification is about, is eliminating that source of climate emissions and switching to electricity only. And the good news is that there are lots of technologies available. They're not even new, really. They might be new to California, but there's lots of electric technologies that affect almost anything you could think of, certainly across the board. For appliances, certainly we hear a lot about cooking being one of the items people are not sure about. And yet we see these just amazing results in terms of, once people try induction, they really, really like it. So we could talk about some of those if you're interested, but the technology exists and it's readily available. Just a quick note on biogas because we do hear the question often is, why, why can't we just clean up the gas, the natural gas system that we have? And the challenge is really one of quantity. If we're just using California-based sources, there's just simply not enough. And if we look outside of the country or across the country, outside of California, we still don't have enough natural gas that is biogas in order to really supplement the need for current, current gas and new construction. So again, today's focus is new construction. Can't reiterate that enough. But we certainly think that biogas has its place, but it's not likely in buildings. It's much more important to save it for those industries that are hard to electrify. So some of the benefits of zero emission buildings, really, I always include the asterisk after cheaper because existing buildings is a little bit of a fine. There's some nuance there because it's not always cheaper unless you already have air conditioning, in which case it is universally cheaper. But for new construction, it's cheaper across the board. It's healthier, more climate friendly, and it's safer. So we'll talk about each of those just briefly here. One of the main pieces that I should mention is just you're eliminating the gas infrastructure. So that can really add up, the piping to the building, the piping in the building, and really helping with the affordability of the housing units because for every $1,000 extra a building costs to build, more than 2,000 households are unable to afford that home. And so the cost really summarizes as this, that building all-electric saves in construction costs. It saves over the life of the building in utility bills, especially when you add solar, which is required for low-rise residential in the state of California now for new construction, and helps to protect against rising gas rates, which are expected to go up over time. And those rate increases largely have been approved already at a higher rate of increase compared to, so Southern California Edison rates, at least. I don't know the specific trajectory for Clean Power Alliance, but regardless, the increase year over year is expected to be more for gas than it is for electricity. Then we talk about healthier. So stoves alone emit a number of different gases that impact health and safety and specifically related to children. And so one highlight here is that children living in a home with a gas stove have a 24% increased risk of lifetime asthma. And there's more and more studies of these that come out, it seems like each month. It's fairly newer science, but it certainly is fairly compelling and important to note. And certainly happy to answer questions about that as well. But one thing I'll mention is the air quality in homes when tested across the state. Lawrence Berkeley National Labs did a study, and they found that more than half, 55 to 70% of households, their indoor air quality is so poor that it would be illegal if they were outdoors and actually monitored. And then the outdoor air is important as well because often we hear the argument that, well, what about power plants? And how much are they contributing to this problem? And this is for just nitrogen oxides in particular, which is a direct contributor to ozone. And you can see that electricity, because it's generated and so heavily regulated, it's a much smaller contributor to that ozone problem and that buildings really are in order for this particular gas with vehicles. We also talked about resiliency. I was really impressed by that fire presentation earlier in the evening. And a couple of things about electric homes that we often hear, what about resiliency? How about the ability to use gas when electricity is down during a public safety power outage or something of that nature? The fact is that modern electric appliances and modern gas appliances all use electricity to start, with the exception potentially of stove, which you might be able to light by hand. The appliances, because pilot lights don't exist anymore, new appliances, they have electric ignitions. So there's no gain in terms of resiliency, except the ability for an all-electric home to be powered with an external backup power system. As well as really looking at eliminating combustible materials is part of, part of the strategy for fire suppression and fire hardening. So eliminating gas piping helps with that as well as hardens for earthquakes and fires as well. So local governments have, have some power here and happy to say that 35 cities and counties have already taken action. And the way they've done this is through the building code. So the energy code in particular, which is a subset of the building code, went into effect of January 1st of this year. And it still favors gas slightly. And so it, we have the ability to shift that. And I'll just point out that it favors gas because until fairly recently, gas was the cleaner option. For the last 40 years, that was the way to go. It has banned the bridge fuel and it very much has done its job. But now that we know that electricity is a clear trajectory to 100% carbon-free, we're starting to make the shift. And the codes are slowly catching up. But what we have in California is the ability to have a reach code. And the state of California actually encourages local governments to take this action by adopting a local ordinance that must be cost-effective to deploy strategies that they're not yet ready to take across the state. And so a reach code, and I'll certainly let the Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee talk about this more, but a reach code is simply a local ordinance that can be adopted that affects new construction, and you can then require all-electric for buildings in your city. And with that, I will wrap up. But thank you so much for your time and attention, and I look forward to your questions and discussion.
Thank you, Amy. To the council, how many cities did you say have already done this in varying degrees?
35.
35, okay. So it's too late to be the leader and the first one, but that's never too late to get started. Okay, from the council.
Oh, Johnny, may I just close the presentation with our committee's recommendations? Thank you. So the Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee has spent a good deal of time investigating this opportunity. At the request of council, we provided the Building Appeals Board with information about the benefits and extent of reach code adoption in California, including a presentation by Amy, and addressed the concerns and questions they had raised, which mostly related to existing buildings and impacts on low-income residents. I'll reiterate it again here now. The proposed reach code is for new buildings only, so it has no effect on existing gas appliances or electrical panels. All, and building all-electric is beneficial to low-income households because of the cost savings and improvements to health and safety. The Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee therefore recommends that the city adopt a clean, straightforward, all-electric reach code for new residential and non-residential buildings, unencumbered by carve-outs or exceptions, so as to be of maximum impact. All-electric is cheaper to build and operate, reduces indoor and outdoor air pollution, improves safety and resilience, and reduces greenhouse gas emissions. It's win-win any way you look at it. We recommend that the council direct staff to bring back an ordinance and building code language at the next regular meeting for adoption. The committee and Amy are at the ready to assist staff and available to answer questions you might have. And I encourage you to take advantage of Amy being with us this evening. She's a, has expert knowledge in this area. Thank you.
Okay, so back to the council. Suzie has her hand up? Suzie, you're muted.
I always mute because of my dogs. We received at least 20 public comments, and I believe only one of this most recent batch was in opposition, although we have in the past received letters from two or three residents that oppose this. And I would say that the number, I'm a low-income renter myself, and the number one objection that I've heard from the public and from members of the Buildings Appeals Board is the fear that this is going to be a burden to the, to the low-income members of our community, which includes, it's a wide range of people, including our writers and artists and as well as our, our, our workers in the, you know, the tourist industry. And so, and I believe, Amy, this is the second time I've seen your presentation. It's a lot to absorb. I want to see this, post it on the city website so I can watch it again. But I think it's very important to dispel the notion that this is going to be a burden to low-income renters especially. And we received a letter from, among the many letters we received in support, was one from Tim Mafziger, who works with, for racial justice. And I don't know if the council... And I don't know if the council read his letter, if I could read it out loud. But he's adamant that we should support this because he feels that it's the low-income people who are more exposed to the pollution from, what's the word, from gas appliances that aren't running right. So this will actually benefit low-income residents. And also, the other question is, well, what happens in 10 years? How do we transition? Perhaps you could address that as well.
Is that a question in that, or was that just?
Two points, maybe you could read, your timing could not be better because we're poised to approve new projects, actually, that have been in the works, some of them, for 20 years. So I think the council probably would like assurance that this will not make the affordable units more expensive. Am I saying that right? And also, the separate question is, those of us who are renters.
Okay, why don't you stay with one question in order to make it easier? Amy, would you, did you pick up on what the question is?
Yeah, and so I think the question is related to expense for folks in affordable housing. And for new construction, affordable housing across the state almost universally is using electric appliances. There is a few exceptions where the technology was a little challenging six months ago in terms of just the modeling software for making code compliance, which is a super nerdy topic, but we don't have to get into. But the technology works, and it is almost universally applied already in affordable housing construction today. So yes, that's the standard.
Okay, and Suzie, we'll come back to you for the second part of your question. Bill's hands up. Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to, first of all, I'm absolutely in favor of moving this to specific ordinance development for us to consider. So we have something that, you know, fits into our, the way our code is structured. I mean, I'm absolutely ready to refer that to staff for ordinance development. I also believe that both the Climate Emergency Group and the committee and the B A B ought to be invited to comment on that ordinance development. I'm not saying it gets referred for deliberation, but just open for markup and comment. The comments I want to make about this, being careful, okay? And a lot of this comes from, and thank you, Phil, for the time. You've allowed me to spend with you talking at some extent on this. Number one, Phil made the suggestion to me that we include some sort of appeal process in any kind of reach code for unanticipated circumstances. That's always just a good standard rule. And I think that's something that we ought to think about how to incorporate in a constructive way. Because when you're talking about broad-based things and then you have specific things, it's hard to anticipate everything. And you should always have some sort of an appeal procedure. Second of all, I want to, you know, I think there's no, we've got to look out for unintended consequences. And I know that I already covered this with Phil. There's no intent, for example, that if someone has 100 amp service and they have a gas hot water heater, and they have to get a permit for a replacement hot water heater, they're going to have to upgrade their service panel to handle that. I don't think, we all know that that's not the intent. I think we're all in agreement on that. I want to point out, though, that we've got to look at interactions with the other parts of our code and other policy goals. In our accessory dwelling unit language, that's also in compliance with state, the new state laws. You are allowed to build an accessory dwelling unit using the same meter. You're not required to put in a new service to build an accessory dwelling unit, you know, in addition to the primary unit. And while I don't have any issues with all-electric and the new construction permit for a small ADU, we have to consider the impact if that would trigger having to upgrade the primary residence service capacity. These are just issues we ought to just be careful about and think about. I also want to point out that we don't want the unintended consequence of adding to air pollution. Let's say a commercial building is required by their subset of regulations to have a backup generator that can't be met by backup batteries under current technology. If we want to force them into liquid fuel generators that are more polluting, that they may require to get their license to operate when natural gas would be less polluting. Again, it's about bridging intelligently. That's all I want to point out, is that when we think about how to go forward with this, we want to do it smart, and we want to do it intelligently. Let's remind ourselves that the CPUC recently extended the permits for natural gas peaking plants because we weren't ready for, you know, we're going to get there, but right now, we're not ready. And the CPUC said, you know, the bridge is still being built. I'm not saying that you want to favor this, but I wouldn't want to force someone into a greater emissions when we could have less emissions in this bridging step. So I'm in favor of turning it over for staff development with due consideration for unintended negative consequences.
But can we have the, can we have the climate committee members or Amy Ryder address the concerns you just expressed?
Well, I'd rather just, I'm stating them that I, I'm, those are the, I would like those to be incorporated in terms of considerations when, rather than a debate now, we're going to turn this over to staff development. And I just want to make sure there's a back and forth. They perfectly, you know, they can respond, you know, during ordinance development. I don't want to have a full-blown debate on every detail tonight.
Okay, and we have members here who will weigh in at some point. Go ahead to the other members of the council here, and then we can come back. Ryan, are you leaning forward to say something, or just? You look great, okay.
Well, I mean, sorry, I just jut something in for that. I'll go ahead then. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share some of Bill's concerns, and I have three categories of things that I think that I appreciate the proposal of not having any carve-outs, but I think there's three areas I'm very concerned with. Number one is ADUs. This council, our policy has been, we wanted the broadest, most inclusive, easiest way for people to create ADUs. We've had compliance programs, we've done all this. As, you know, I'm concerned that there could be situations where that could be problematic, and it might not, it might not make it easier to put in an ADU. Affordable housing, we don't know exactly what the implications are. We don't know exactly what developments are going to go forward. I don't know exactly. Now, if it's cheaper and it's easier, then it shouldn't be a problem to get the developers to want to do that. But I'd like us to have the flexibility in it if we're going to move the rest. The other category is something that's very unique, that I don't think a lot of people are aware of. But Ojai signed up for this a while back. It's called Clean Energy Property Assessed Clean Energy. It's called the CPACE or PACE program. And the specific things that you can use in the PACE program aren't necessarily totally, I'm not sure if there's going to be any conflict with this. And I'd hate to see somebody trying to use that type of funding and have a problem. So I don't, maybe those are problems, maybe they're not. I'd like to know more. But if they are going to be problems, which I've kind of looked at, then I'd like to make sure that we aren't creating a code where that, where there's not enough flexibility to address those concerns.
Other comments before we go back? Okay, Suzie, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Randy's turn.
He just raised his hand, but I called on Suzie, and I'll go to Randy after. Did you have anything more, or did you, were you?
Well, I'm just anticipating that the climate emergency members will have a chance to respond to the concern.
They will, you're anticipating correctly.
So far, I haven't seen anything that they have to respond to. It seems to be pretty positive. First of all, I'd like to thank the climate committee for all the work that they've done. Amy, you seem to be knowledgeable, and you seem to be pretty skilled. One of the questions I had here, if I had a Southern California gas consultant sitting in front of us, would he or she be as skilled as you? And I imagine they would be. Thank you for your time, and obviously, thank you for all that you've put into this. You're, again, you seem to be very knowledgeable. I think the biggest question, or the biggest concerns that have come my way are the fact that the state of California isn't ready for all of this electricity. So that's one issue, and maybe someone could respond to that. The second issue is, and I think Bill and Ryan are both alluding to, is the slippery slope. Once you start, you know, where does it go? That's an interesting conversation, because from my perspective, we need to keep moving forward. So I don't have a sense of a slippery slope, but I do have a sense that whatever we do, we need to bring the community along with us. And that's where we are right now in this discussion tonight. I think it's a great discussion. I think it's good to be heard, and the community to listen and to be involved. 20 people weighing in out of 7,500 people in our community isn't enough. We need more. So we need more outreach, but that shouldn't slow us down from the fact of bringing something forward regarding new construction for the simple fact we might have three or four homes that fit that category in our development process. So I'm willing to listen to the comments. I don't know if they're going to be read out loud, or if people are actually going to speak. And I'd be willing to listen to the climate committee themselves, if they'd like to add anything else to the discussion. But I'm willing to move forward with what Phil and Ryan have talked about. And again, recognizing that this has got to be from the bottom up, not top down, and that the community needs to understand the when, the what, the why, the how, and all of those impacts that might impact them.
Okay, do we have people in the queue, Gail, that would like to speak?
Yes, we have six people.
Commence with that.
Johnny, this is Bill. Could I speak?
Yeah, I thought you wanted to go last.
Well, I do, but let me just respond to some of the issues raised by Bill and Randy. I think we're emphasizing that this is for new buildings, not existing buildings. The economic analysis done clearly shows that it saves money to have all-electric buildings, both in terms of construction costs and operating costs. It is a solution for more affordable housing, because you can make housing cheaper by going all-electric. We think that it makes sense to apply it to ADUs. Even if they have their electricity extended from an existing property, yes, maybe that would require a new panel. But to put electricity in a new building probably would require a new panel anyway. We don't see a downside for ADUs or any kind of new building. People should not be afraid of having their gas appliances taken away from them. We're not talking about existing.
Anything else? If not, we can come back to you at the end of the discussion. Gail, would you invite in those people who have given you cards?
Okay, we have Karen Schmidt.
Okay. Karen, are you there? Yeah, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. And thank you for taking public comments on this important item. My name is Karen Schmidt, and I am the Director of External Affairs for Clean Power Alliance, the community choice aggregator that supplies clean renewable energy to 32 communities in Ventura and Los Angeles counties, including, of course, to the city and residents and businesses of Ojai. I am also myself a lifelong, or a longtime Ojai resident, and my husband and children are lifelong residents. Have grown, all grew up here in the house that we live in, just a couple of blocks from the community center at Sarzody Park. Clean Power Alliance is a member of the statewide Building Decarbonization Coalition, and we support the adoption of an all-electric reach code for new buildings in Ojai. In taking this action, as has already been noted, Ojai will be joining 35 other cities in the state and counting that have already adopted electric reach codes for new construction. It would continue Ojai's history of environmental leadership at a time when the state is working as fast as it can to curb the worst effects of climate change. As a 100% green member of Clean Power Alliance, as also has already been noted, Ojai has chosen 100% green power as the default rate option for our community. This means that Clean Power Alliance is already procuring 100% renewable energy on behalf of Ojai residents, businesses, and city facilities. And it means that when Ojai residents and businesses increase their electricity usage in buildings, we will be directly replacing energy consumption that would have been powered by greenhouse gas emitting and polluting natural gas with energy usage that is instead powered by 100% clean renewable energy. Electric reach codes also tend to emphasize efficient buildings that consume less energy overall, which will further reduce the climate and grid impacts of our built environment. Clean Power Alliance cares deeply about facilitating a reliable transition to a clean grid. We are currently the third-largest purchaser of new battery storage capacity in the state. And by next year, we will have procured two and a half times our state mandate. We have already met the mandate for 60% of electricity generation from renewable energy across our overall portfolio. We did that last year, 11 years ahead of the 2030 deadline. And we are already preparing for the increased electricity demand that will result from Governor Newsom's recent executive order on zero-emissions vehicles and other state initiatives, as well as from the shift to building electrification. We are confident in the expanding capacity of the grid and our own capacity to procure clean and renewable, clean and reliable power to meet these goals and to support Ojai's reach codes should the city choose to adopt one. We urge you to support this recommendation and move forward promptly to develop and adopt an all-electric building reach code for new buildings in the city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Karen.
Mayor, could I ask Karen a quick question?
Sure.
Karen, can you hear me?
Yes.
I've been researching a little bit, I've talked with Michelle about this, about how some grids are going to decentralized, supplement, or even primary approaches to battery backup for peak load management with renewables, rather than centralized. I was just particularly reading, I think, about Green Mountain Energy in Vermont is doing this, where they're actually helping customers in their installations treating it as well, an avoided cost of having to do, you know, larger centralized backup systems by putting decentralized peak load management battery backups, either with solar or off the grid. Is your organization thinking about exploring that option at all? Because that also has inherent efficiencies in terms of reduced transmission losses for peak load backup in management.
Yes, Clean Power Alliance is actively exploring, and in some cases, piloting a whole range of local programs around distributed energy resources, including local storage and backup power. As just one example, we are, we're going to be working with the city of Ojai and our 31 other member agencies on an initiative to install backup power at critical facilities in each member agency so that both we and our member agencies can gain some direct experience with these new technologies and how they can be used not only for backup power during, you know, during community emergencies or power shutdowns, but also for operational and cost savings benefits like peak shaving and load shifting. So yes, there's a lot more I could say on that, but we are very actively engaged in exploring these opportunities.
Well, I'm certainly a lot interested in, personally, as one council person, in taking a lead on that in Ojai, so looking forward to more discussions on this.
Great, I look forward to it as well.
Okay, Gail, who's next?
Matthew Gao.
Okay.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Matthew, you're on. Welcome. Matthew, are you unmuted? Where'd you go? You were on there a second ago.
He should be in.
There he is, he's in again. Okay, now he's unmuted.
Great. Yeah, hello, folks. My name is Matt Goff. I'm a senior campaign representative with Sierra Club. And I am really excited to be here this evening, to hear y'all taking up this issue. I think that there are a number of important reasons to adopt building electrification, and so I'll just touch on two of them briefly. Amy mentioned one of these, but I think it's worth repeating. There are real public health concerns associated with having gas appliances in our homes and businesses. As Amy said, one study found that when a gas stove is on, the indoor air on, the indoor air quality level was so bad when it was inside that it would be illegal if that same air quality were found outdoors. On top of that, another study found that children who grow up in homes with gas stoves are forty-two percent more likely to develop asthma when compared to kids who grow up in homes without gas stoves. So this is a real public health and safety concern. I think that the climate concerns and the affordability concerns are also real and also pressing, but I just think that it's important to reflect for a moment on the fact that gas appliances can have real negative health outcomes for the folks in Ojai, and this policy is one that can have tangible positive benefits for folks. So I just think it's worth remembering that when we are talking about this issue. And COVID-19 and the wildfire season have really compounded this in a lot of ways, where oftentimes people will go outside to get out of their house but couldn't for months because of the wildfire season, and couldn't go to outdoor venues like malls or other sort of public spaces to gather because of COVID, and were stuck inside. And it's this double-edged sword because the gas appliances that we all live with are emitting harmful air quality as well. So, you know, where do folks go? I think that adopting this ordinance to support all-electric new construction is an important step to protect public health, and I'm just really excited to see that y'all are taking it up and having a robust discussion around it. The one other point that I want to raise with the remainder of my time is Ojai's ability to affect the statewide conversation here in California. As we speak, the CEC, the California Energy Commission, is thinking about what the next version of Title XXIV is going to look like, which is California's baseline building code. And there's a real possibility that they'll consider an all-electric baseline in 2022. And so, Ojai passing this ordinance now would go a long way in, I think, influencing the CEC or showing, maybe not influencing them, but showing them that these codes are appreciated by communities all across California. There are thirty-five cities and counties that have already done building electrification reach codes. I mean, so you all would be in great company. I think that a lot of the legwork and the groundwork is already done, so I think that there's some good questions that have been asked, and the resources to answer them are already out there. So I'll say thank you for letting me speak this evening, and I'm really excited to see the city move forward with this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. Gail, who's up? Tanya, is she next?
So she is listed, but she has not joined the, the queue. But we do have someone who signed up, who's not on the list I sent you, which is Michael Chiakos.
Okay. Michael, he's unmuted. Michael, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, good evening, Mayor Johnson and City Council members. My name is Michael Chiakos. I'm the Director of Energy and Climate Programs at the Community Environmental Council. And hopefully you're familiar with us. If not, we have been working since nineteen-seventy on environmental solutions across the whole central coast. We're based in Santa Barbara, but we do plentiful work in Ojai and throughout Ventura County with dozens of partners on many different climate solution projects such as electric vehicle readiness, energy efficiency planning, renewable energy and energy storage development, food waste reduction, and carbon farming, and sequestration activities. And we are strong supporters of Ojai joining these thirty-five other jurisdictions that are encouraging or requiring new building electrification. We've heard, you've heard about California's ambitious and necessary climate goals, and so we must really construct new buildings that use clean electricity rather than natural gas. Ojai has shown great environmental leadership with the hundred-percent renewable electricity default through CPA, and this reach code will then help new construction get closer to true sustainability. You've heard today about how all-electric buildings are healthier for the people that are living there. They're more affordable to construct and to operate, and this is very vitally important for California's housing crisis. A building electrification reach code is included in the recently adopted Ventura County Climate Action Plan, which will be implemented in unincorporated areas of Ventura County, including Ojai Valley outside of the city. So Mayor Johnson stole my line in that I was going to say that, you know, that first rule of being in a hole is to stop digging, and we are in a climate crisis, which is a deepening hole. And really, we need to stop hooking up new natural gas and using new fossil fuels in our buildings. You may have heard sometimes so-called gas comes around and is talking about renewable natural gas. We support renewable, renewable natural gas where it's possible, but it's only a very tiny part of the solution and should really be saved for very hard to, to electrify sectors such as heavy industry, not for buildings where there's a readily available technology. Ventura County is the fastest-warming county in the lower forty-eight United States, and as you know, we've been experiencing a range of devastating and expensive impacts in Ojai and in California. So the time to act is now, and I really hope that you'll consider the building electrification reach code. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Michael. Nice to hear from you. Gail, is there anybody else?
Johnny, may I ask a question of this previous speaker?
Yes, if he's still here. Michael, are you around? Yeah, he's still there.
I'm here.
He, he said that Ventura County, I believe he said, is the fastest-warming. What, what you, are you, are you implying that are the temperature is increasing more than other locations? I've heard that before.
Yeah, and if you look at the letter that we submitted, there's actually a link to the Washington Post story, which I actually got quoted in. They did some great reporting around the country and including reporting in Ventura and Santa Barbara counties, and they, they did an analysis and found that Ventura County is that fastest-warming county. So we've been seeing the impacts here of drought and fire and floods up in Santa Barbara, and, and we've all seen it. So yes, it's, it's happening now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Gail, is there anyone else out there that would like to speak with us?
The only other people that I have on the speaker list are the members of the Climate Committee. I have Paul, or excuse me, Phil White and Michelle Ellison.
Okay, who, Michelle, are you the chair?
Right, I didn't, I just wanted to make sure I was able to register for the meeting, so I don't need to comment anything other than, I'll, I'll just address one of the, the questions that was raised about, you know, can the, the grid handle this? Is there an ability to supply the demand that, that is coming with increasing electrification? And indeed, you know, the California Energy Commission and the electric utilities across the state are investing, you know, heavily in grid improvements to modernize the grid to accommodate this increasing demand. So, you know, Edison, I understand, sent in a letter today or yesterday, and in that, they indicated they're spending four to five billion dollars annually on grid improvements. So Rudy Gonzalez, the Government Affairs Representative, normally, I think, chimes in during these meetings, but was unable to. So I just want to bring, you know, highlight that, that work is being done to enable us to transition to a cleaner future right now.
Thank you, Michelle. Jim, would you like to add anything to the conversation?
Yes, I would, John, thanks.
I said, Jim, you're going to get to bat last.
I'll pass. Amen to everything everyone else is saying.
Okay, now Phil.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tim.
That's okay. He said amen. It's over to your corner.
Okay, I, I spoke with, with your city council last year at the time that you considered a declaration of a climate emergency. And I remember, this is pre-COVID, where you could actually walk up to the podium and, and declare your position, and my position was, yes, we, we have an actual climate emergency and we need to deal with it. And you did that declaration, and to your credit, you have followed through with amazing decisions, joining the Clean Power Alliance, hundred-percent renewable power, doing the program for electrification of landscape equipment. Ojai certainly has, as they say, punched above its weight, and I think influenced other cities and counties in the area. And I think if we on the Climate Committee have concluded it's time to, to do the next step, I think it's an easy step, an all-electric reach code is shown by economic analysis to us less money, both in terms of construction costs and operating costs. That makes for more affordable housing, and that can include the accessory dwelling units that are coming our way, we know. Others have spoken about reduced air pollution both inside and outside of buildings. That is so important. We know that, as Michael pointed out, the County of Ventura included a reach code. I'm, I'm on the Planning Commission. That was part of what the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors approved for the, the county's general plan update and the Climate Action Plan that's in it. As Bill pointed out, you know, it's important to have an appeal process. There inevitably going to be certain circumstances that are special cases, and people need to have that appeal process to, to avail themselves of. We, we would agree that, that that should be a part of it. I think it's an easy decision for your council. I don't see a downside. I think it's a win-win all the way around. The Climate Committee and Amy have already made a start on pulling together the language, the code change language and ordinance language. So if you, if you approve what we're recommending, we'll be ready to come back in two weeks with some, some language, and hopefully Mr. Summers will have an opportunity to have reviewed that in the meantime. And the Building Appeals Board people will also have an opportunity to, to look at it and render their opinion. So again, it's an easy decision, no downside. It's a win-win. I encourage you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, I have not weighed in, and I'm the one that got us into this, so let me make a few comments. One, the only place I would disagree with Phil is that nothing's easy. But this is probably the easiest and safest step to be, to commence. We're not taking anybody's stove away. People say, well, this is the camel's nose. It will then, the camel's coming anyway, guys. We're not going to be the ones that are going to be doing that part of it. But if we quit making the situation worse in our small air basin where we have high fire dangers and drought, it seems to me that this is a fairly reasonable, and I will agree with Bill, easy in that sense to take this step. Not necessarily for the final product, but to get this going, because we have a horrible habit, and for a lot of good reasons, to delay things and to put them off and to run them around the pole. We can think of a lot of reasons, and our Building Appeals Board can think of a lot of reasons. People don't want to jump into this, but we're not asking, or at least I wasn't, and I don't think the community is asking the non-elected board of, of the Building Appeals Board to be making policy decisions for the city. What we want them to do, or what I wanted them to do when we sent it to them a couple months ago, was to take a look at it technically and raise any flags or things that we should take into consideration. You don't have to have a Building Appeals Board. You do have to have a, a Building Appeals process, of which the City Council could be that appeals board. The good part is of having a Building Appeals Board is they can devote themselves to it, and, and they make a contribution to the community. One of the bad things, if you're not careful of what gets appealed to them, is that if they're making the decisions, their decisions are not challengeable except in court. In other words, the City Council will not have a, a way to weigh in on it. But I believe there's something that can be done, going along with what Bill was saying, that as this unfolds and we get it put together, where we can bring the two things together. We can have the best of both worlds. This is not a new thing. Gold medallion homes were available when I was in high school, you know, and that was a long time ago. The difference was, they were producing the electricity with coal and oil and natural gas, and the sulfur content was, caused sulfur rain and a lot of other things. So we didn't want gold medallion homes back then. But now with solar energy, the whole thing has changed with the technology improving rapidly. It seems to me that this is not a high risk. So we're not bleeding edge. We know how to do it. We know it's going to be cheaper. But the issue, I guess, of whether or not the grid is well able to take this, I think there's a greater concern that the grid will not have enough renewable energy as opposed to not being able to handle transmission. Edison's doing a great job of, of improving the grid for transmission, and if we all cooperate with the decentralized storage areas to a certain degree. Right down, down in Oxnard, they're building a, a major storage area, a battery storage area for electricity. It's just the beginning, and we could do the same thing in coordination with this. The remaining buildout of our town is so small. I remember one of the first meetings, I heard Councilman Haney make the remark. He said, our town is pretty much built out, and he's right. So the additional increment of building in Ojai is not going to collapse the electrical grid. It's not going to burden anybody, as long as we don't burden our existing homeowners with having to do something that they're not yet ready to do or can't afford. This is only prospective, and I think that if we direct staff to take the proposal from the Climate Committee and produce a draft of an ordinance, we can start the iteration process to tune it up and be sure that we're not making mistakes and incorporating some of the things that Bill's brought up and of all the members of the council brought up. So, you know, I, I'm ready for a motion on this. Is there anyone who would like to make a bill? You got your hand up. Good.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we refer this to staff or ordinance drafting with due consideration for this, this discussion tonight, and in, in, in adopting in, in, in the, the goals of, of the reach codes as, as defined tonight. I also want to point out, just for the record, what we did with lawn and garden equipment is already, I would argue, already a reach code. So this is actually, in my mind, continuing a reach code tradition that we're establishing in, in the City of Ojai of going beyond what is required by state requirements. So I'm going to make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
Mayor, just a point of order. Did we close the public?
Order is a second, then I'll come to you unless you're leaving for the restroom. That's one of the points of order. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Okay, Randy, you're, you're on.
I've never heard anyone close the public comment. So we're putting motions forward. Are we still in the public comment section?
No, we asked for the public comments twice, and there are no more people in the public comment.
Would we close that or will we leave it open?
You what?
Would we close that or leave it open?
It is not a public hearing, Randy. It is a discussion, so that's taken care of. We have a motion and a second to direct to staff, and I would assume that we have a pretty good start on a term sheet right now, just from all the comments that were made this evening. Ryan?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because I, it wasn't clear in the, the motion, as long as, I mean, I, I don't want the staff to go through creating an ordinance if some of these issues aren't cleaned up. And I, I'd also, I think it's, some of these things I want some more information on. And, and I, you know, I, I will say, I've talked to a number of contractors and one electrician since I found out about this, and unanimously they all said, even though the installation may be cheaper, it's way more expensive, like extremely more expensive for the, for the stuff itself. I'd like to learn a little bit more about that. Like, using the water heaters, I've heard different things. The annual cost for those, my understanding is extremely high. Not that I don't trust anybody who's on the, from our Climate Committee. I just have a lot of conflicting information regarding that. So I, I don't mind an ordinance, but I, I have more questions on that. I, I don't mind if we want to come back with an ordinance, but I, you know, if there's an ordinance that doesn't account for, if I don't know the answer to that, I don't know how I'm going to be able to vote on an ordinance, because I really am concerned.
The motion's not committing anybody to vote for the ordinance. It's preparing the ordinance so you have a base- It's preparing the ordinance so you have a base for discussion. And be checking into these things that you're, you're, the questions you raised are certainly legitimate. Uh, and everybody needs to start focusing and thinking about it and we can do them in, uh, parallel. Uh, so, uh, yes, uh, does that clarify what the motion is?
Uh, yes, I just, uh, I just want to make sure because if I, I don't want to be in a situation where the next time we're voting on this, the staff has gone through putting an ordinance together where, because I don't have the additional information I need, I can't make a decision on it. So I'm going to do my own research, but I don't know if there's collective research that might be necessary by the staff to get some of these answers.
Yeah, well, we have a history on the council, even with fences and hedges, that even though we go through the process, we recognize if we, if we've overlooked something or new information produces, we're willing to go back and take a look at it. So I don't think that, uh, this, you know, no one is being committed to anything other than to be giving the city attorney and the city manager some direction to get the first cut at this and bring it back. And that will at least have us all paying attention. Randy, you had your hand up.
So, um, as they're doing their research, you know, I went, you know, all of us have had to do research for this because none of us knows all of it. Much, most of us know little of it. Um, I went to theenergiedepartment.org federal data show. And I would suggest everyone go to it. In fact, I'll give that information again, but I'm going to tell you, the federal data does not show electrifying homes as being the cat's meow. Um, they are showing a tremendous amount of cost increases from thirty to fifty percent. So again, as they're, as we're moving this forward, which I want to do, we need to gather all the information and we need to share the proper information with, with our community. Because if we're just gonna go along to get along and start stuffing things down people's throats, it's not going to be for, it doesn't make a good community. So again, I, I, I'm glad Ryan was clarifying what we're doing tonight and that what will come back will more likely be another discussion item and not another ordinance, Ryan, because there's a lot of information that needs to be vetted.
It, it'll focus our attention and that's the good thing.
Well, the motion is though to create a, a, a draft ordinance. And you don't have to adopt a draft ordinance, but if we're not willing to even do this, I don't know what's out there that we would be willing to do.
Well, Mayor, like I said, like I suggested, I think there's more if we're going to move this forward that we could do with new construction, um, along with this. And those, that's some of the input that I'd like to be able to give the staff.
Well, yeah, there's nothing that would prevent us from doing all those other things as well as this. Uh, I agree with you. Okay, is there, Susan?
Well, I, uh, before we move on, I just want to leave, uh, this council and the public with one thought. There, you know, we're worried about unintended, the unintended consequences of, of adopting a reach code. But let's not forget the unintended consequences if we don't move forward to having clean energy. Those unintended consequences are far worse than any financial and all, you know, these are the financial things and things that we can work out. I believe that there are, can you hear me okay? There's a strange echo. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
There are, um, I don't want to use the word rebate, but there are sources of, um, you know, where you can be compensated if there are financial issues. I believe I, I did some research on that a few months ago. So the financial issues can be worked out, but the consequences of not dealing with climate change, there's no working that out. We have to deal with it.
Thank you, Susan. Any other comments before we take a vote? Okay, well, the clerk called a roll.
Count, Mayor Protenblatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Uh, sorry, staff, this is our official work, but, uh, we'll all try to help you, okay? Thank you, uh, your climate committee and citizens out there who took time to tune in tonight and to comment. See you later. Okay, uh, our next, next, uh, topic up. I'm moving along pretty well here. Coronavirus update.
Thank you. I, uh, I'm pulling up, uh, we have just a couple of slides on the latest update. Okay. So we, we want to just give a quick update on the, uh, latest as it relates to the coronavirus, uh, emergency situation. Um, the big news, uh, well, actually, let me, uh, start with, um, here we go. Um, with the, we've been kind of each council meeting, we've been updating on the statistics and the trend and, uh, on case numbers and, um, everything and, uh, let me, okay. So, uh, here we, we show that the, uh, the statistics over the, the last, uh, five months or so since May twenty-sixth. Uh, and it shows the total number of cases and the increase from nine hundred and twelve in May across the county to thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty-eight, um, as of, uh, the most recent report from the county. Uh, and it shows the, uh, trend over those last couple of months. I think, uh, focused on Ojai, the, uh, total cases, not current active cases, but total cases, uh, has increased from a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and thirty-five over the last, uh, three weeks. Uh, and, uh, we've, um, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, but there had been a, a, uh, little bit of a surge in the Ojai area due to a, uh, assisted living facility. And that has been, um, we've been in communication with the county on that, that that has been managed and is getting under control. So there hasn't been as much of an increase as there was from, uh, in the past. So that is positive. And then importantly, for hospitalizations and ICU counts, uh, they're both trending the right direction as well, which is down, uh, from September twenty-second, we had thirty-nine hospitalized in Ventura County. We're down to thirty-three. And, uh, we had eight, uh, fourteen in the ICU, down to eight now. So, so most of the numbers are actually, um, trending the right direction, which has enabled us to, uh, get to the big news today, uh, which came out last week. But, uh, this is the first time we've had a chance to talk about it at council, that the, um, county did move in, uh, to the subs- the red tier or the substantial risk level from the purple tier or widespread risk level. And, um, we're making progress even towards potentially, if things continue positively in the next, you know, month to six weeks, being able to move into this moderate level. And what that means is a reminder, we talked about it at the last meeting, but, uh, what it means is, uh, there's, um, for each tier, there's, uh, a table that shows what can open once we move to the next tier. And so, um, since the last meeting, we had playgrounds and recreational facilities open. So a lot, hair salons and barber shops were open at that time. They had just opened. Uh, but now retail can increase some capacity from twenty-five percent to fifty percent. So that's, uh, a move forward. And when we get to yellow, then it'll, it'll be, um, without reduced capacity. Uh, and then there's, uh, for each of these categories, nail salons, um, where it had reopened right before our last meeting. They, it was added into tier one right before we moved to tier two, uh, with personal care services. But museums, zoos and aquariums can now reopen indoors with reduced capacity. And places of worship can now reopen indoors with reduced capacity. So those, those are some of the, um, major ones for Ojai. The other thing is gyms and fitness centers can reopen indoor with reduced capacity of ten percent. And restaurants can reopen indoors with reduced capacity of twenty-five percent. One thing that I think we're seeing locally that we're happy about is, uh, we've worked hard to get, I think we've issued twenty permits at this point for outdoor business, uh, operations. And the businesses that we've reached out to, since this has changed, have indicated that they're going to keep trying to, to stay outdoors as much as they can. I think one of the benefits we have here in Ojai is the, the weather. Although we're, we're, we have a short-term heat wave this week. In general, uh, we have the nice weather where it, it's not a bad thing to be outdoors. And so, um, with this, you know, businesses are going to be able to do a little bit more, but, um, we're hoping here in Ojai that people keep, you know, supporting business, eating outdoors, um, and, and shopping outdoors when they can, so. Um, and then just lastly, uh, this week, the COVID nineteen testing at Sarzadi Park was, um, canceled for this week only to, to make some repairs to the equipment, uh, the, um, the, uh, vehicles. But, uh, they, uh, the county has said it will return on Monday. So, uh, this continues for a couple more weeks here. So anybody who, um, is wondering where to get COVID testing, you can do it on Mondays at Sarzadi Park from noon to five without leaving the valley, so. Sure. And that's it. There's a, there's not much, uh, you know, I think the positive this week was numbers are trending in the right direction. Things are reopening and, and we all just need to be diligent to keep that moving forward.
Yeah, Randy.
James, did they ever clarify the difference between a restaurant and a winery?
So they're two separate categories and it's here. And, um, uh, there is the gray area where if a winery serves food, they were able to do a little bit more than, than just a, um, a plain winery. But I think, uh, now they've, they have distinguished where it's a restaurant versus a winery. So they've, they've put those into two separate categories. And the, uh, restaurants can now open indoors with a twenty-five percent capacity. Wineries still have to be outdoors only.
Okay, there. Bill?
Uh, James, you and I talked about this earlier. I will see if there's any new developments. But we've talked about the inconsistency between saying you could have an outdoor wedding reception with a hundred people physically distanced. You can have indoors, a large restaurant facility, twenty-five percent capacity or up to a hundred people. But the county still doesn't want to allow us to have physically distanced chairs watching someone do a performance on the gazebo outdoors in Libby Park. Um, any, uh, kind of, uh, movement on that logical inconsistency? Because it, it seems to discriminate against a, uh, kind of like the, the, uh, the big box retail versus small retail that we ran into earlier. It seems to discriminate against a smaller city that wants to have some, you know, very small scale, physically distanced, relative, you know, pretty safe, at least, uh, no more risky, um, cultural events.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had a couple of conversations about it and the county, um, is trying to get in line with the state guidelines. And so I was told yesterday that the county is going to put some guidelines out or some, some guidance out this week about, um, outdoor, um, uh, gatherings. And, uh, basically, our understanding at this point, and it wasn't clear in, in the state, in the state's orders, and so this is all, you know, it's like having to work through that chain and, and, you know, we raise it to the county and then the county raises it to the state and then we're trying to get clarity. But, but our understanding is that, um, their understanding of the state order is that outdoor gatherings will be limited to what they're calling three households. And so, um, if you were planning a gathering, you could invite three households to this gathering.
And how does that, how does that square with a hundred people at a wedding reception outside?
Right, yeah. And I, I'll, 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 uh, get to that. There, we went through a little bit of this, so I'll, I'll explain, uh, what I was, uh, told. But, but the, the, um, when this comes out, when they put the guidance out in the next few days about the three households, the interesting thing about it is if you, if you really think that through is you could have a gathering with three people from three different households or you could have a gathering with, you know, thirty people if ten people come from each household. So it really is a wide range and it, it speaks to the issue we've seen throughout of trying to create these rules for situations that are, you know, very, um, diverse. So, so we did raise that issue and we raised the issue of, um, how that squares with movie theaters being open, but for example, Libby Bowl not being able to reopen with, with proper distancing. Uh, and one point that, uh, was made based on the, the state order and the logic or the rationale for treating movie theaters different from like the, the Libby Bowl is they were making the point that the Libby Bowl would have, uh, someone on stage singing and people in the crowd potentially singing. Uh, it's an, it's an active situation versus sitting in a movie theater with no one, you know, speaking, yelling, singing. So, you know, that was the first justification I had for it. And I do understand the point a little bit. If the point is to keep people from breathing on each other. Um, but that was, we got into a long conversation and that was the justification for why the movie theaters are treated differently from concert venues or, uh, the other one. We've been working with the Arts Center to try to get, to see what they can do. And, um, and, you know, I think the, the short answer is going to be that it'll be a little bit longer before they're able to, we are able to open Libby Bowl for, for events and they're going to be able to open, you know, the Arts Center or similar facilities for plays or musicals.
Yeah, there are, uh, any other comments? Uh, Ryan, you disappeared from the screen. I don't know if you're waving at me or not, or whether you left.
I'm, I'm literally sitting.
Say. Okay, I didn't, I wouldn't ignore it. I just couldn't find you.
I didn't go anywhere, Johnny. I've been sitting here the whole time.
I go, but you disappeared from my screen, so I couldn't see you waving at me. I see you now.
No, even I'm not on your screen, I'm, I'm still around, so.
Okay, that's good. I'm relieved. Uh, I'd like to make just a couple of comments. One, for those who are tracking this whole issue of, uh, the trends in the cor- coronavirus, uh, Europe is on the rise now. You know, Spain, Italy, uh, England, uh, are all having, uh, you, what they believe to be the second wave starting because of the weather. Uh, and nationally, within the United States, I think over half the, uh, states are starting to surge, North Dakota being one of the, the worst. But, uh, uh, and then when you look at the map, where we used to be the hotbed here in California, we are one of, you know, several on the West Coast that are, are starting to experience this improvement. So, you know, I think if everybody's patient and we're doing the right things, uh, uh, I'm not sure, maybe I've said this before, I'm not sure if we were the first to, uh, direct people to, uh, wear masks when they were, uh, indoors and are, you know, going into enclosed areas and being within six feet of people. But that's pretty well with the exception of, uh, somebody who sent me, uh, an anonymous letter. You may have received a copy, I don't know. But they told me I am the council, we were, uh, felons and that, uh, we could go to prison, uh, because of the mask. And I submit to you that, uh, that is in an emergency, a, an effective thing that is now pretty well proven by, uh, the studies. And the fact that we, here we are in the Ojai Valley, a place that really, uh, could have been the hotspot with, uh, the tourists coming in and out. Not to blame them, but they come from other areas and if anybody's a carrier. And yet we have done quite well, so I want to commend the council and all our citizenry for what they've done. Uh, a last point I'd like to make on this, and it's only tangentially, uh, that's the right pronunciation, related. But, uh, I received some information, uh, today, uh, that in our demonstration garden, where we have had some problems with the people who have taken up residence in there, uh, someone who was quite ill. And the person who, uh, reported this, uh, knows what she's talking about because she's a physician and she was visiting the garden with her children when she discovered this person who appeared to be quite ill. So, uh, you know, I think the public health issue in the garden is more than just the Boise decision and that we can't, uh, do much about homeless people. People who are sick and people who at night are screaming at each other and cursing, which this particular couple have done on several occasions. Uh, there should be something that can be done, so I just bring that up so that we all pay a little attention to it. Bill?
And I could also point out that, uh, you know, when we're having, uh, people creating possibly unsanitary conditions and what is the farmer's market, which has to follow county health standards, that, you know, that's another possible public health issue.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's keep our fingers crossed and keep doing what we're doing. Uh, have anything else on this topic, James?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, let's, uh, get the next topic, which, uh, is what, is that the budget?
Yeah.
This will be your report.
Thank you. I have one more presentation. This was a little bit longer, but I think it's, it's very useful information and, um, and, uh, we'll, we'll try to keep it quick. Um, when we adopted the budget in June, we had, um, we kind of all knew that, uh, we were adopting a budget that was going, going to be very volatile and going to change most likely. Uh, we hadn't seen the true impacts of the coronavirus yet. So we had said at that time that we would make sure to come back quarterly until things stabilize and give an update and talk about any needed action. So this is the first quarter, uh, budget review. Um, and, um, it, you know, time keeps flying as, uh, we are now seven months into our declared emergency. So, um, it, uh, you know, I, we're, uh, moving forward and, uh, having, getting having, getting some updates on some information uh, related to the budget. So uh, so this report is intended to kinda get everybody up to speed on what, what the situation looks like currently. To kinda start the conversation, we just wanna remind uh, everybody that on March thirteenth, right the morning before we declared the coronavirus emergency, we had had a budget committee and, uh, meeting. And with Measure C passing, we had talked about projects that would be um, prioritized or recommended to council for prioritization. And we um, talked about a potential uh, proposed budget of about twelve million dollars, eleven point nine million dollars. So from March thirteenth to June thirtieth, when we adopted the budget, we had already cut one point two million dollars, which for our budget, um, you know, it's almost a ten percent cut, um, which is pretty substantial right off the top. And uh, uh, so even the adopted budget was already a reduction, knowing that revenues were gonna be impacted pretty severely. And um, uh, quickly before moving on, is it, since the budget was adopted, we've continued to make reductions. We've managed vacancies and helped um, positions open. We're down from thirty full-time employees to twenty-four full-time employees. So we're just, you know, uh, the, the saying of uh, doing uh, more with less is, you know, we're trying to, to do that to get through this situation. And uh, we've managed to reduce the expenses even further, which will help um, you know, uh, fill the, the, the otherwise uh, budget deficit. And so um, we wanted to start by kinda showing everybody, you know, when we talk about our revenues being impacted, what we actually mean. And uh, so I think everybody knows our largest tax revenue each month is a, is our hotel tax. Um, on a normal month, we receive about three hundred and ten thousand dollars. And with Measure C passing on March sixth, just before the uh, pandemic, we had es- estimated another uh, fifty percent of that. So we were expecting to get, you know, that that would increase up towards about four hundred thousand dollars with that extra chunk going to some, some priority projects. Instead, what happened when uh, the, the next week is our uh, COVID nineteen stay-at-home orders started and our revenue dropped from three hundred thousand to one hundred thousand. And then in April of twenty twenty, it dropped further to six thousand four hundred and ninety dollars, uh, which, you know, when we talk about what would we have to do to, to be able to have a balanced budget with six thousand four hundred and ninety dollars? I think the answer is I would be the only employee and I would, and you know, and we'd close the, turn the lights off everywhere else and, you know, and everything. And the challenge, we all know is that during this time was the height of, you know, every day we were having to put new orders out. We were having to put the face order, face covering order into effect. We were having to open cooling centers. So the challenge is we were really, you know, getting impacted budget-wise, but trying to provide new and uh, and more emergency services. So um, so in May of twenty twenty, that started to creep up to about twenty thousand dollars in revenues. Still, you know, a, a fraction of what we typically get. But the positive news is in June, July and August, you can see it's continuing to trend up and closer to normal. Um, and so that's hotel tax uh, only, but we are seeing similar trends with sales tax. And then the other good news is property tax has been pretty stable. Um, uh, you know, I think when this first went into effect, everybody was worried about, you know, foreclosures and things like that, and we haven't seen that happen yet. Um, and hopefully we don't, so we haven't seen a, a big impact there. So um, what this means is that um, when, on those months where we brought in six thousand dollars in revenue and we still were providing services, the only way to continue to do that is to use reserves. And, and so, you know, we had, I think our city council had been very aware of the reserve issue and every year at budget, we talk about building reserves and it's always, we've kept it a priority, I think, knowing how um, delicate our economy is and how um, you know, dependent on uh, certain industries. So uh, we, we've kept it a priority and um, we had thirty-two percent in reserves. Uh, on about a ten million dollar budget, we had three point two million dollars at the start of this, so we had thirty-two percent in reserves. But the, as a reminder, our goal is to have fifty percent of our um, budget in reserves, which would mean worst-case scenario, we'd have six months to get by and sixty percent would have been about five to six million dollars. So we had three point two million, which uh, is a large percentage, um, but because our budget's so small and um, and everything, the uh, uh, we, uh, we only had thirty-two percent, so we had not reached our goal yet. So we were trying to build that up. And um, what we've done in the last six months, we've had some months where the deficit was severe. It was, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, but with the last couple of months receiving more regular type revenues, we've been able, and, and then with our expenditure reductions, we've been able to uh, only use about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars per month of the reserves over the last seven months. So um, we've um, we've been able to reduce the impact pretty well compared to, you know, like we showed the T O T chart with the month where we brought six thousand in, right off the bat there, we should have been three hundred thousand dollars short. But uh, we've been able to, to offset some expenses and reduce that monthly deficit. And then a key point we, we just wanna make is that having these reserves has allowed us to stay open every day, to continue to man City Hall, to continue to do um, other things that pop up such as the cooling stations during the heat waves. And again, you know, a lot of cities, I, I don't know of any other city, I don't know of any city off the top of my head that hasn't done furloughs at this point, that hasn't um, you know, just reduced services. I think probably, I hear about it all the time from, from residents who call us and are surprised we're open or who tell us that they emailed another city and the city, they got the response back that they are, you know, in a COVID delay and they'll get a response in three to four weeks. So we have not uh, done that and I think that's uh, really only because we had adequate reserves to, to continue to function. And we, you know, we budgeted wisely and carefully, but we didn't have to close City Hall or stop staffing certain positions. So um, the, uh, just so everybody can see kinda the impact on reserves. So the goal for us is about fifty percent for six months. So again, like uh, when we say a fifty percent reserve, what we mean is half the year that we have in reserves, that would be five million dollars. In February of twenty twenty, we had three point two million, which is about three months in reserve. So when you look at that and realize that seven months later, we still have something in reserves, it tells you that we, we've really managed it closely. Um, but you can see, we had some good timing as well, as far as the, you'll see the reserves start to drop. And then you'll see, you'll see it creep back up and it's creeping back up because we received some of our annual property tax payments and motor vehicle tax payments. Uh, and so those bolster it a little bit, but um, and then you'll see it start to drop a little bit more regularly without those tax payments coming in. And so at uh, at the end of September, we are projecting that we've gone from three point two million in reserves to one point seven eight million in reserves. And it's really, you know, I would just, I just keep telling everybody, it really is mixed news is, you know, it's, on one hand, it's good news that we have um, two months in reserve at the end of all this, you know, it, 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 it could have been worse. But at the end of the day, uh, if there is a second surge or if there is a, you know, uh, another fire as uh, as uh, Mr. Roper pointed out, that, you know, the fuel is there again, um, it is going to be very difficult to um, continue to provide service and stay open and everything with the amount of reserves we have. So we have to just manage it very carefully and try to build up as much as we can. Um, and uh, this chart, it shows going back to two thousand three in orange, uh, cause there's two different things and I'll, I'll get to the next color, but in orange, back to two thousand three is what we've had in reserve. And so the disappointing thing is if you go back to two thousand three and then you look today, we're almost where we were seventeen years ago. But on the other hand, we just had the worst pandemic in a hundred years, so I think, I think it's understandable. But you can see a couple of things here, which is um, two thousand four to two thousand six, which I believe is, you know, the timeline where the inn was closed, that uh, there was no reserve and then there was barely a reserve. And then uh, it started creeping back up and then there was the recession and it dropped back down. And then over the last three to four years, we've started to build it back up and uh, and then we had the uh, the COVID pandemic. And so um, this chart really illustrates, you know, the uh, really what it illustrates is that after our eighteen years of building our reserve, you know, it, it's um, we're still in uh, a situation where we aren't at our reserve goal because of some of these downturns and it just shows that we need to be very diligent when times are good to keep saving. And so the second color, the, the uh, bluish color is our reserve goal. And so you'll see, as the budget goes up and down, the reserve goal goes up and down because it's based on our budget. And so you see this year, uh, or in more recent years, the reserves uh, uh, goal has gone up and we haven't quite met it. And uh, so uh, you know, right now there's a pretty big gap between our goal and our, our actual uh, reserves.
You know, one way to uh, think of this, uh, for those of us who are into the water issue of the, the groundwater basin and Lake Casitas, if you think of the reserve as Lake Casitas or for that matter, the groundwater basin, uh, you, what you see is, is that you need to build the reserve to a point so when the drought comes, you, you don't uh, die of thirst. And uh, we've been, we dodged a bullet so far, I guess, knock on wood. Uh, but when you think fifteen years trying to accumulate the reserve we had at the start of this fiscal year and, and you know, or not the start of the fiscal year, but last March, and within six months, you know, being a third, two-thirds down, uh, should be a sobering experience for all of us. Hopefully we will be out of this thing or at least stabilized soon. So James, good work on that and to the council for the work over the last few years. They paid a lot of attention to this, otherwise we would be down at the bottom. Anything else you wanna do on this?
Yeah, one or two more slides, then I'll try to keep them quick. But um, one of them is, and, and uh, let me take a step back and say that last week, we had a budget committee meeting and we, we tried to talk more about this topic in particular with the budget committee, which is, early on, we knew, we knew that we were gonna have to dig into the reserve and our reserve policy requires that anytime we use the reserve and we go under a fifty percent goal, that we start developing a plan for rebuilding the reserve. And I think first off, off the bat is, in this current situation, we are still focused on like stabilizing our budget as a whole. So uh, we aren't at a point where over the next couple of months, it's likely we're gonna start rebuilding the reserve. But it's not too early to plan, I guess, is, is what we're, what we're trying to say. And so um, so we, we met with the budget committee and we had proposed, or we had talked about a couple of ideas to rebuild the reserve. And one of them uh, is coming up on November third, which is um, Measure G, the cannabis tax. And just as a quick reminder is, the idea, that's a uh, general tax that would um, start with a three percent tax on the cannabis tax and that amount could be adjusted by city council anywhere from zero to ten percent. But uh, it would start with the three percent tax that we estimate would fund about four hundred thousand dollars to the city uh, per year. So you can um, when we're, when we talk about being down almost um, one and a half million dollars in the last six months, um, one of the suggestions was that if Measure G passes, that the city uh, with the first, you know, that we would come back and recommend the first year or the first, you know, set a time period where the initial Measure G funding would go directly to our emergency reserve to rebuild it. And um, and so this, you know, it's not necessarily, we aren't bringing this for action right now, but it's, we, we wanted to kinda talk about where this um, what, some of the options that we're gonna uh, do some more research on. And obviously the, the big question on this is, is waiting until November third to see how the voters react to it. And then uh, second was similar, it was creating a fiscal stabilization fund, which is a separate one that is basically a, a fund that we can't touch. Uh, and it will create it like an emergency fund that is only to be used in case of emergency. And um, we talked about creating that using some of the prior twenty percent T O T transfer to C I P and setting a certain amount such as five percent was what we discussed at the budget committee. Uh, five percent of that transfer going instead to this emergency stabilization fund. So I think for us, if Measure G doesn't pass, that is probably what we'd look at. But obviously the, the downside to that is that just means a little bit less money going to, to our C I P, which for, for the um, for residents watching is our capital improvement projects, which includes things like, you know, um, streets maintenance, building maintenance and those types of things. So um, it would be, you know, taking a small reduction there, but um, though with Measure C, I, we're, we're primed to do more work than we've ever been able to do in the past. So, so that's something we've talked about. And then third is something we're working on independent is uh, we are working on this inter-fund loan. The good news was we were working hard to bring that to council to approve today. But with the, our latest budget, um, uh, our latest revenue um, reports and everything, uh, we actually don't have an urgent need to do it, so we're gonna take, we're gonna kinda take the approach of we have, we have one ready, but um, we're gonna do it if needed. So we'll return at a future council meeting if um, if revenues don't continue to stabilize here. And the only reason why we, um, just to explain why we aren't in a rush to do it if we don't have to do it, is because even if we are funding, if we are loaning money to ourselves from, for example, the, you know, a um, uh, let's say from the general plan update fund, you know, that's a fund that is a specific purpose. We cannot use it for anything other than general plan update. Well, if we loan ourselves that money, we have to pay ourselves, as part of the loan, we actually have to identify interest that we have to pay. And so it's one of those things that we don't wanna do it until we have to, but we uh, we've gotten prepared to do it on short notice if needed.
Mayor, I have a question?
Yes, Bill.
Uh, James, since we have uh, under the options under investigation, um, the, you know, a possible outcome based on voter choice on November third?
Yes.
Um, another possible outcome based on voter choice on November third is uh, and I'm not taking a position on this, but Prop fifteen, there is a component in Prop fifteen that includes uh, local funding. Not just school funding. And uh, would it be worthwhile to at least try to define an uh, initial research into uh, that, if that passed, possibly also uh, uh, dedicating anything that came from that to build, rebuilding our reserve?
Yeah.
It's a good idea. And, and also, what's the other one? Nineteen? The one that uh, on the uh, transfer of tax base for fire victims and
Right.
Yeah, that that is projected to generate at least in the first few years, not a lot of money, but still some money that would come to local government. So that could also be, since it won't be a reliable rate, that would be a great one to earmark and stick in the, for emergencies.
Right. Okay, yeah, yeah, we'll do, we'll uh, we will investigate that and then bring that back uh, as a potential uh, item to earmark. So I think for us, eh, right now, if we have a new revenue source coming in, um, the, our recommendation is gonna be to put it towards the reserve, so.
Absolutely.
There's a couple on the, on the ballot, so we will watch those closely. Yeah.
Another hand, Randy?
So Mayor, I just would, would like to thank James and Pam and, and the rest of the staff for all of us that, James, just thanks for doing an outstanding job and, and um, keeping our heads above water. And, and it's just um, again, I know you receive a, a ton of phone calls regarding a lot of little things. It seemed little in the big picture, but the person making the call, it's a big thing. And I just appreciate the way you've handled it and the way you've handled um, us and, and the community. You're just doing an incredible job, so, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think that, that is all I have for the presentation. I think, you know, the one thing, um, I, the one last point I wanna make is, is we, we have reduced from thirty to twenty-four staff people like, as far as, you know, managing vacancies to reduce expenses. And so um, you know, last thing I'll acknowledge, cause I've told our staff I haven't done this enough, which is, you know, we really are doing uh, more with less and uh, and uh, this is my chance to just, you know, point, point that out and give credit to the, to the staff for um, coming in every day during difficult circumstances. I know a lot of people are working every day, but you know, it's, I know a lot of people are working every day, but you know, it's, I think everybody, I had somebody the other day who said we never think uh gas station employees because of them having to come in every day. And I think for these circumstances, we don't think about it very often, but I think everybody who's working right now should get, you know, a pat on the back. Uh, you know, at the city or otherwise. So I'll take this chance to say that. So but uh that's it. That's my budget report.
Okay. Well, thank you. And uh while we're patting people on the back, I want to pat Randy on the back that when we came with the bad news several months ago, showing what was happening to our reserve, Randy was the first one to ask the question, how are we going to replace this? So uh they got the message, Randy, and uh uh we're so far with a little good luck and uh discipline, it seems to be working out at least so far.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you you know, Mayor, just uh um to to pat your back too, if I remember correctly, one of the most important issues that you ran on originally was fiscal responsibility. And um and we as as a council have grown because of your involvement in your direction and helping us to understand a lot of these, these things that it takes to run a city and to run a community. So again, thank you, and we're gonna have another opportunity to thank you down the road. But um your guidance has helped all of us. I know it's helped me. So thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh we are now on uh another another topic of county city issue called the the Mass Care Shelter Plan. Uh James.
Yeah, and um so this is on the agenda tonight, and I believe, I believe we have um one of the representatives from the county, yes, I see Jeffrey Garcia and Stephen uh Stephen on the call. Um, so I'm just gonna give some uh a brief background on this, but the uh and the county has developed an updated mass care and shelter plan. And it was developed in response and in reaction to the Thomas Fire and the Woolsey Fire. Um, and it was, it was basically acknowledged that with these large scale incidences, it's very difficult for for um everybody to coordinate responsibility for these um emergency shelters and these evacuation centers. So the county was working with the cities to develop this plan uh over the last, I would say, it's time flies, but I would say twelve to eighteen months. Uh, the city's been involved throughout. The disaster councils met on this topic a few times. And uh Mayor Johnston, uh the disaster council actually asked Mayor Johnston and I to go to the county and speak um with the county, and we did that. And then Captain Brythe and myself also went to the county at one point and spoke on this. Um, but so essentially, uh that's kind of the background on how this was developed. What the plan is, is it's the the new plan to uh that lays out who's responsible for what as far as Fiddy County and Red Cross related to um mass care and shelter. Uh, and so uh we've been pretty adamant throughout that the city of Ojai is in a very unique situation compared to any other city in the county. And um and I know that, you know, we say that um you know, it's not uh, this is not the only time we've said that, but I we just, for this situation, we really do see this unique issue where anytime a shelter opens, you know, at Nordoff, let's use the Thomas fires as an example. A shelter opened at Nordoff and had, you know, upwards of a thousand people there. But the vast majority of those people in the shelter are going to be unincorporated Valley residents. It's just uh factual. I think the number, I had been estimated at, uh I had been told that at that time by Captain Fryoff that the number was between eighty to ninety percent county residents and then between ten and twenty percent city residents. And it's just the nature of the incident, as I think we know, is if there is going to be a fire or something like that, it's coming from from outside of the city through the unincorporated area and then potentially into the city. But like the Thomas Fire, we've talked about, it never came into the city of Ojai. So um so there's all these unique circumstances that aren't in place in other areas. So so long story short, as we've been working on this plan, um the plan, uh I understand the other cities have signed on to the plan. It makes sense for a lot of cities. Uh, we have been working on it closely. We had a meeting with the with police and with our directors and everybody else in the last couple of weeks. It, we just do not believe this plan works for Ojai. And I'll tell you ultimately what our concern is, is there's a couple of sections in the plan, two point two, two point three and two point four, which essentially shift responsibility for the shelter operations to the city and give the option to the county to provide support if if it determines it's necessary. And uh that's very concerning for us. As the staff report mentions, the city has twenty-four employees. And that wasn't a typo. We don't have two hundred forty employees or twenty-four hundred employees. We have twenty-four employees. And the county has eight thousand employees. And so the idea of shifting responsibility for a shelter that'll have ninety percent Ojai Valley unincorporated residents uh and shifting that responsibility to the city. Um, it's, doesn't make a lot of sense. And I also, I I typically am a can-do kind of person, but I just have to, you know, acknowledge that it just would not work. A uh a shelter with upwards of a thousand people and the city's twenty-four employees would be operating an emergency operations center twenty-four hours a day, which takes, you know, six to nine employees. Uh, would be still staffing city hall, which is what happened during the Thomas Fire, which takes, you know, six employees. So we'd ultimately have, you know, three to four employees um manning a shelter that has up to a thousand Valley residents. It just, it doesn't, um like I said, it's a unique situation where Ojai is not like the others on this. So at the end of the day, uh we've been working with the county. We actually um a few weeks back uh had talked about um making an amendment, uh an addendum to the um shelter plan that would somehow address that issue. And and we just put an addendum together that talked about costs, but it really is more than just costs, it's staffing and cost. And uh essentially, the reason it's, uh one of the reasons it's on the agenda is, at the end of the day, if the city is responsible uh for this, I have concerns that we will not be able to live up to that without significant county report uh support. And uh but like like I started with, the county has asked, uh we're the last city that hasn't signed it. And they've asked us to consider signing as soon as possible. So it's on the agenda today for us to discuss that. And I see um, I'll I'll leave it up to council, but I do see um uh Jeffrey and Stephen on the on the call if there are any questions.
I I'd like to hear from Jeffrey and Stephen, but that's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, that's fair.
Well, Mayor, uh I just have one question for for James. I know that the the Nordoff High School's been the Red Cross. The Red, the Red Cross has been running the the uh disaster relief center at Nordoff for the last, well, since I've been here. So have they stopped? Is is that what's um requiring these new negotiations? Is someone is not going to provide that service anymore? Or um do you know what the circumstances are?
I can give you one answer to it, Randy. One is that uh what's brought this to a head is, I believe, a grand jury report that was somewhat critical of the county. And so the county's trying to address some of the shortcomings that were identified. But that center that was always a regional center operated pretty much by the Red Cross. And because of all the fires in California, uh the Red Cross is saying, we're tapped out. So now the question is, is who takes responsibility and who pays for it? And uh I told James, in my view, uh we need more of a joint powers agreement with shared liability and shared uh proportionately shared costs, uh because we do not have the cap capacity to do this. If we had to on our own, we could just open up our cooling center over at the Sarozoni Park and deal with our own people. But we all know that we're all one county, we're all one valley, and the people are going to come wherever it is. So it'd be great if we could figure out something with the county where they would accept the uniqueness, as James calls it, of our situation.
Well, I that, I I under, I understand that part. I was just uh was wondering how, when did, when did, when were we notified or when was the county, do we know, James? When when we were notified that the Red Cross was not going to be providing this service anymore?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. My computer crashed, so uh I'm getting back online.
But this is Stephen. I can answer some of those questions if you'd like.
Great.
Hi, thanks for uh having me, uh Mr. Mayor and council members, Stephen Carnesas. I am the Human Service Agency Disaster Response Recovery Officer uh since June, is specifically hired to set up a a new county plan. Um, basically, the the Red Cross notified us uh as early as June uh that due to COVID, for a number of reasons, their resources had been stretched extremely thin. Most of their volunteer base are those that are vulnerable for sixty-five uh is who they rely on for their volunteer pool. So even before the fires started, they had already notified us and and the Human Service Agency is the agency by law that is regulated to cover mass care and sheltering. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you hit it exactly right. Uh, we got pulverized in 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 the audit that was done and the way that we've been, the county's been responding to and set up for uh to respond in disaster. So um my esteemed colleague Jeffrey began looking at this as early as the the beginning of the year to try to get this M O U through. Um, I'm gonna let him speak uh a little bit to that, but I just wanted to let you know that really this this collaborative effort in which you will see one or two people from the Red Cross at the shelter. We're hoping to have one or two people from your city at the shelter, perhaps even the shelter manager position, which we are going to provide the training for that. And then you, by signing the M O U, are going to allow us to respond with the over eight hundred thousand dollars in sheltering equipment that we've just, the county sheriff's O E S has just bought. By signing that, now we can all work together and you will have that sheltering equipment. Um, and we've set up specific in COVID where we have pre-designated temporary evacuation plans. Uh, Ojai High School is one of those points, one of five strategically in our county. You'll show up to that location, you'll be screened for COVID in that location in the parking lot. And then from that point, you'll be assigned a hotel to go to. It's a hotel-first uh sheltering system with with COVID. And that's the system that we're engaging. Once we run out of hotel rooms, then we will go to a congregate shelter at that location, keeping in line that we'll we'll have those uh COVID guidelines. Uh, I'd like to hand off to Jeffrey now to explain a little bit about the M O U and the background behind it.
All right, yes. Hi, everybody. Uh, thank you for having us. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here uh virtually. Love Ojai. Always has a great vibe when I go there. So I really appreciate uh being part of this call. Um, yeah, so it um, you guys have touched on the main points. Uh, I believe in the M O U itself, the this language does speak to uh the county bearing primary responsibility. It's in under the role of cities point four. And it gives the cities um uh some agreements that one of them also is bullet two, is to inform uh HSA and the Care and Shelter Branch for the county in the operational area of its capacity to stand up and operate. And like Stephen said, this has begun, this began, the spirit of this is is begin, began twenty eighteen prior to Hill and Woolsey Fire, after Thomas, prior to the audit even that came up from Thomas that you were mentioning, that basically showed that uh the Red Cross had the capacity diminishing and the county needed to step up even prior to the audit, just to run things smoother. And because we hadn't really been hit with such a large scale uh event that was covering most of the region. So those two things kicked this off back in twenty eighteen when we got a committee together, HSA facilitated because of our role and responsibility. And we had county folks, we had city reps, we had um the Red Cross. And again, it's always been our partner and the the training Stephen's talking about is all in line with Red Cross standards and and trying to support that entity, not uh rule it out completely. That's not what we're doing. So anyway, the spirit of that has come through uh the Mass Care and Shelter Plan, um which James mentioned earlier on. Uh, the M O U, though, is part and parcel hand in hand with that agreement so that we can have, yeah, all ten cities on board, sharing resources, not only stuff, but people. So if you're looking at specifically to your city, yeah, there may be, if we're, if if you guys are incapacitated, there may be some shortage there in resources. But we're also looking broader at if an event is happening in the east side of the county and Ojai is all good, but you have trained staff that can respond, maybe you guys can come and share some of the burden on the other side. And likewise, if Ojai is inundated, but the east county is all right, they can come to Ojai and work. And I'm sure a lot of the county folks that live around your area, we potentially will have a group that is trained uh that may come down and be able to support the shelters as well. So we're looking at collaboration inclusiveness, but also understanding that um the resources in smaller cities are are less. And uh there's nothing that I've read in any of these agreements that is saying you must stand up a shelter with or without uh any kind of uh understanding that you have limitations. And we're looking at this collaboratively collaboratively to support each other because of those different uh differences and uniquenesses.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
I asked a couple of questions. So so Jeffrey, um just so I understand, um and I'll just come up with one detail and then a a second question. For example, when it says that the uh one of the city responsibilities is to designate a city care and shelter coordinator, obviously, a little, a small city at best would only be able to add that responsibility to an existing staff person. We couldn't have a full-time staff person doing that. Uh, also, the option is, would this allow, for example, us to contract that responsibility um out to a specific uh third party rather than having it be a staff responsibility? And then that, building up to the next question, since we are really an outlier in terms of how small we are geographically and in terms of tax base relative to our sphere of influence and area of interest, I mean, we're by far the smallest in that regard. You, would you be open to the addendum recognizing that particular outlier situation?
Uh, yeah, I think we did allow some language that um would go to the signing page that spoke to the uniqueness of Ojai and the statistics regarding the population that surrounds you versus what's actually in the city. Um, so yeah, I mean, I think there's room there. Now, whether you're, as far as the coordination piece, we're looking at, and it's in the plan. So when we go from an incident being triggered where there's going to be an evacuation of some kind, for example, we are looking to to have a briefing with the Red Cross, with the Human Services Agency, with the Office of Emergency Services. And right at that point, before any evacuation is 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 uh is activated, to talking to the city coordinator or rep, whether you do something contract-wise or uh have somebody trained within your own staff, that's that's up to you. I don't think we have any kind of say in 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 that jurisdictional choice. So yeah, that's, but what we want is your voice. We don't want to come large and in there saying, yeah, we got all this stuff, we're ready to help you. And then you want, you don't like, you know, the choice of where we're going, for example. We want you in there on that initial decision and the pre-planning going into it.
We want to have us ready to go, that we're free to look at different ways of being ready to go.
Sure. And we're actually going to offer training as well. Yes.
Thank you.
So Mayor?
Yes, Randy.
Jeffrey, it's always, Jeffrey, yes. It's it's always interesting um from our perspective, how how um you know, again, we're the, we're the stepchild of the county. Um, we're out in the middle of nowhere, we're always forgotten. Um, you started these, this, this, this um program in July of twenty eighteen. And here we are in Sept- October of twenty twenty. And um maybe the mayor and maybe the city manager have heard of this program for two or three months, but the rest of us haven't. So from my perspective, we should have been brought in to these discussions as early as possible. And 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 that's probably some of the pushback you're getting from us is we're hearing about it for the first time and we have all of these reservations and and um we kind of like feel like we're being force fed. So you you'll have to um, I'll apologize for me, but but that's how I kind of feel at times is the county writes a contract, they want all titties, all ten cities to sign it. And for some reason, they don't think that each individual city has unique needs and and responsibilities and and struggles and concerns. So it would have been great to be in on the front end of this conversation rather than the back end. Um, I see the importance of having it. I'm not, I'm not, I I maybe you can help me understand the eight hundred thousand dollars. Is that in equipment, in training, or is that in actual dollars if we needed money for um for resources here in the community?
Is that in equipment, in training, or is that in actual dollars if we needed money for um for resources here in the community? That that's a great question, Councilman. I'll take that. So we uh. Office of Emergency Services for the Sheriff's Department through a number of grants, uh some of which they received from S E E. Uh we were uh as a county woefully behind in sheltering supplies. In other words, uh we had relied on the Red Cross. And we got beat up pretty good in that audit and they said, well, what if the Red Cross isn't able to do it? So we have uh uh through O E S. Place the five trailers and over eight hundred thousand dollars in sheltering equipment. Uh cots, tables, generators, lights, that by you signing this MOU. You now are part of that plan and we can roll out with that equipment if we have an emergency in your area. Even if you aren't able to provide anybody from the city, nobody's saying. Hey, you're signing this and I need five people from the city of I gotta be there. We get it. You guys might be. Tapped out, that's fine. If you have one or two that you can send and help, that would be great. It's now a collaborative shelter. But by signing the MOU, you're allowing your city to be available for this joint operation for help. You may be getting people from the city of Ventura Disaster Response Team that'll be coming up to run your shelter. That's something by signing this MOU that they're saying, yes, if it doesn't affect our city, we'll come to Ohio and help. So. We'd like to see it as a win-win. I absolutely agree with you. We should have got the city council in. Much sooner and I apologize for that. I started in June and. Jeffrey's done a great job of trying to get this through and we absolutely get it, like Ohio's different. Every city's different. Um but we're not asking, to me, as the disaster response and recovery. Person for the county now, we're not asking really anything from you. We're saying, this is what we want to do. We want to come with this to help. And respond. Um the other councilman asked, hey, can we assign it to a third-party contractor? Absolutely. But I just got to sit through your 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 budget presentation and I would say. This is very doable to to add maybe to somebody that's already at the city, maybe an hour a week is is all I would envision this undertaking. Couple of meetings, maybe a month and and you guys would be good to go. I hope that answered your question.
Okay, other comments before I weigh in?
Uh Susan has her hand up, Mayor.
Oh, okay. She's not on the screen right. Susan, where are you?
Unmute, unmute Susan, unmute.
Yeah, oh, there you are.
From what I'm hearing, it seems wise to consider to consider signing the MOU. And it sounds like what we need is a volunteer base that's younger than the than what we would usually have. And I know the way that the community came together during the Thomas fire, when I think of of um Trevor and um. So many people in the community that that organize themselves, I it seems to me that we could get that. A volunteer base to substitute for the uh for what the Red Cross. Uh you know, used to do. It seems like we could take advantage of your training program. That seems really, really sensible to me.
Yeah, that that that's a great comment, Councilwoman. And HSA, I just trained, uh we had volunteers within the Human Service Agency that said. Hey, we'd like to volunteer to to work at a shelter. They not only took the Red Cross Shelter Training, but attended a two-hour training class that I put on. And we're just now getting ready to put on a shelter manager class. And uh we meet once a week with all the emergency managers from every city. And all of those are emergency managers. We're very excited to say, hey, we'd like to send one person or two persons to free training. And that way, if they need to step in, uh maybe somebody from Thousand Oaks will have to come up and. Run the shelter at Ohio because you guys are busy, but by sending that MOU, we're all working together. Um it's certainly not the way it used to be where we can just rely on the Red Cross and say, hey, they're gonna run everything. The Red Cross is saying to us, the county is responsible. They have the ultimate responsibility here. We're here to help. But we can only do so much right now.
Uh James, before you have to stick your neck out, let me, let me jump in a little bit here. One, I, no criticism, or at least very little criticism of the county, Randy, on this being when it was rolled out. It was true that we heard about this, I don't know how many, it's more than three months ago, it probably goes back six, eight months ago at least. It was dropped on us kind of on short notice, but that sort of thing always happens and I don't think we need to go back there. But since we've known about it, we've taken it to the disaster council, we have met with the county. And there is a difference between what is being presented, which is, seems like a great idea, uh for mutual aid. And access to all these supplies. But the original language and my understanding of the agreement, and I think what what my motion is going to be to refer it to the city attorney and the city manager to verify. That the language says what uh is being presented here tonight. If all they're talking about is mutual aid, Ohio doing its part. Having access to this equipment for the benefit of all the residents of the valleys, not just Ohio. Uh I think that there's probably a way to do this. I think the problem is, and it's not, again, blaming the county, but the county uh created this. And they went around to the other cities and the other cities just kind of signed it. Uh saying, well, who, you know, who can agree or disagree with getting access to all this good equipment and doing our share? Uh we agree with that. But what they didn't look into, they didn't take it to their councils as far as I know.
No, no one else did, no.
Uh these, a lot of times the manager just signed it because they have plenty of staff and they're already doing some of these things. Everybody we have, including recreation people, our our tech guy, James Hunt, uh the mayor, we all reported during the Thomas fire. To City Hall and to our little emergency operating center to work with the police. Uh there was, there were a handful of us and it was a twenty-four hour handoff. Uh we had to send people over to the school district to get them to open up the gym and get the generators that they didn't even know where they were anymore. So I think what's being asked of us is not unreasonable, that there should be a contact person and a coordination and training. But the idea of seventy to eighty percent of the area and the population, maybe ninety percent of the users of this center. Uh to have little Ohio be the point on it, I think we should be able to work something out. With the county where we can do a combination where we pay our proportionate share, the county pays their proportionate share. We we're part of the mutual aid, uh we'll run to the high side of the boat if it's Thousand Oaks that needs it. Uh and they'll come help us if we need it. I think that part's easy. But the idea, we, I don't know what James said our staffing level was, but it was something like forty or less people when we started and he's down to what?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four people, you know, the, and when we first talked with the county, they were saying, well, you guys can handle it, but. Port, Port Wine, Amy, they can't. I said, wait a minute, you did, I think James pointed out, you guys don't realize. How much larger these other places are in population, uh you know, and in resource. So uh you know, no offense, we're glad the county came and talked with us, uh but I think we should move this. Uh to have our city attorney take a look at it, uh and our, let our city manager consult with him and report back to us in two weeks. Because I don't think the staff should be signing something that is taking on the liability and the financial responsibility. Uh until the council votes and the council can't vote until we're sure what we're buying into. Because uh I'm with Susan, I think it'd be a wonderful thing to have volunteers helping us and get all this good stuff from the county. But I don't think that's quite the way it might turn out without a little more clarification. Randy, I see your hand.
Mayor, the great statements and the anxious statements were excellent too about about, you know, formulating the new. Type of of a reserve unit to help us in this. I I, as I, as I read this, I think the thing that that the word that comes out the most to me and maybe is James' most critical word in this whole. In this information packet is um this, the the proposal plant, plan appears to give the county the option. To provide services. So James, is your question the fact that the county would call the emergency or the city would call the emergency? And if we call it, we're stuck with it and if the county calls it, they'll support us? Is is, am I reading that as your concern into that line?
Yeah, yeah, I mean. And this is where I've I've disagreed a little bit with when I've met with the county is, there's a couple of points. One is the city should first operate their shelter site. And then the next section says the city can request county shelter support. What I read this MOU as doing is saying that the city is responsible and the county can respond if they choose to. And where we are in a unique situation from any other city, and I've I've worked at some of them, is that. A shelter open at Nordoff is not, is going to be county residents. But what I see here is the city should first operate its shelter site. So we are committing to operating that Nordoff site and the county can choose to um respond.
Well, should we get that, Mayor, are you saying to get that clarification later or can we ask the guys to clarify it now?
No, they've already said what they said. I think it's up to, you know, it's our responsibility and our city attorney and city manager to sit down, look at it. And then advise us on what it says, not what it is meant to say, and if it, if there's a difference, then it should be recrafted.
We did add an addendum at the uh city manager's request, so we have changed it at his request for the verbiage he wanted.
Yeah, that 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 addressed, that addressed costs, which I appreciate, but. The second part, and I I emailed you about that last week, I think, was. Um we need to address the staffing issue because I've also worked in other cities and and it is not apples to apples. Uh you know, you mentioned the one to two hours of training each week and that other cities are jumping at it and, you know, I worked in Oxnard, they have an emergency operations. Uh manager whose job, full-time, forty-hour-a-week position is this. They have um their own police and fire, they each have emergency operations designees. Uh the city of Ohio, it's it's me, to be frank, and uh. Um during the Thomas fire, you know, I I reported. I worked six P M. to eight A M. seven days straight. And uh no one from the county, uh and I'm not pointing the finger at the county, but. No one from any other cities or the county came during the Thomas fire. It was me and one other employee. So the idea of now putting a, you know, now it'll just be. One employee and the other one's operating the shelter, it's just, it's. Uh it just, you know, practically won't work and that's, that's the, you know, uh the point we've been trying to make for the last several months.
But James, you weren't at the, you weren't at the uh the Nordoff Red Cross Center during that time.
Was running the emergency center for us.
Yeah, yeah, and and we, we went to Nordoff and um, you know, I was one of the people that went to Nordoff at one point to help start get them open and and the uh. Generators going, so our E O C was not, was not manned for those, you know, two hours we were over at Nordoff and so it really is, you know, um. And it, it's one of the things lately is when we say that like all cities um are unique. It's not taking into account the realistic issues here of of how small of a city we are. And how large of an unincorporated area we have surrounding us that we will be responsible for. I guess, you know, the the question I have for Jeff and Steve is. Uh if a fire comes through Miners Oaks next week, you know, God forbid. How will the county respond to that under this MOU?
We were just out in your area last week, walking through Nordoff High School for a temporary evacuation plan. And looking at it for congregate sheltering long-term as well, just doing new sketches. We're all in. There's no messing around here. We're all in and 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 that's just where we're at. I just want to say two things really quick.
Hold on, hold on real quick, let me, let me get to that because. So is the county willing to say they they will take primary responsibility to open that shelter?
I I believe it says that in the MOU that we bear the primary responsibility. So that doesn't, that doesn't mean that you guys can just say, well, we don't have any responsibility at all. It just means we need to coordinate those efforts.
If I can get in here, I have a direct question about this exact point and I'm right on the paragraph where it is, so maybe I can ask this question because I think it dovetails with what James is asking. In two point four, it talks about a county shelter in a city. And it does say that if a county shelter is open in a city, the county bears primary responsibility for mask care, et cetera. My question is, since we're the hole in the donut, not the donut, and it's highly likely, almost. Almost a hundred percent guaranteed likely, that if there is a mass shelter event that this is describing. That it's gonna have to come through the county space first. If Nordoff is that shelter, is that a county shelter that the county's responsible for? Because the first people to evacuate were in the unincorporated area? Or is that a city shelter that we're primarily responsible for? Even though it was secondary to county residents being evacuated and sheltered first?
Well, that's an interesting question, and so we are also working on a system to start. Intaking folks electronically into our database so that we can understand, you know, where where these folks are coming from. So then at that point, we would have to decide, you know, uh where, what proportion, what proportion is county and what proportion is from the city? And then we'd have to, uh you know, balance that out. And we understand that that exists in your, in your area. So that's, you know, no one's saying that we would not uh want to share the cost. With the city if, you know, based on the proportions of of what shows up and and we got that response from the Office of Emergency Services Director Patrick Maynard. Couple of weeks ago when James asked to put the additional language in. And I just want to also say, there is a forthcoming operational area. Uh MOU from the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services to the larger operational area. Talking a lot more about cost sharing. And it's gonna go over some of the same things based on the larger operational area. It's just been delayed because they've been really busy with COVID and testing and all that stuff, so. That's another piece that's forthcoming as well. And I just want to throw out, since it was brought up in this discussion, again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I appreciate this opportunity. But Thousand Oaks did take it to their council and we have, we shared some of the staff report. With uh the city of Oxnard, which is when they were going, starting to address their leadership as well.
Well, I I want to just clarify because that it is just so I'm aware is that. It wasn't, I'm not asking about funding, it's not a cost question.
Right.
Section two point one says, existing city shelters, the city should first operate their shelter sites. But then it calls it a county shelter in two point four. And my problem is that Nordoff's the only shelter that is in the city. The county is all around it. So if the county area is evacuated first to Nordoff, is that a county shelter with their primary responsibility? Or is that a city of Ohio shelter with Ohio having the primary responsibility?
I, can I answer that for just like, uh under this MOU, we don't have. An area of responsibility anymore. We are collaboratively sheltering. Now, it's totally changed. There's never gonna be a time after you sign this MOU where you're gonna say, uh uh city of Ohio has to stand up a shelter and it's fully their responsibility. Once the MOU is signed, we are collaboratively working together on every shelter that we open. In Ohio.
It says, cities have responsibility for mass, mass caring. In their own jurisdiction. I mean, some of the language in here does appear to be a little bit contrary and I I don't have a problem with it. It's just that if there's a, if there's an evacuate, all of our cities surrounded by unincorporated area, if there's a mandatory evacuation in the east end where it's most likely to happen, where it happened in the Thomas fire. And they're coming out of there and going to the shelter. One section says the city has primary responsibility, one section says the county has primary responsibility. Neither of these, nothing in here defines what makes it a city shelter over a county shelter. And what I'm trying to figure out is, is it defined on the people that show up? Is it defined on the areas evacuated? Because we can't wait till somebody's in there getting addresses. We gotta know whether we're primary and we gotta get there and get people there. Or it's a county shelter that bears the primary responsibility, because let's be honest, that primary responsibility is written in here. Like that's the agency that's gotta get the thing open when the evacuation is ordered. And I can't tell whether we're, whether the east end in the county area gets evacuated to Nordoff. If that's us pulling the trigger to get to Nordoff and open it up. Or we're calling the county to say, hey, you guys have the primary, you gotta get it taken care of.
Sure, I understand your question. So the internal, the city one is for an internal emergency. You have a hotel that that says we have bedbugs and we have thirty people that we need to get out of. Uh uh you know, whatever ci- whatever hotels inside your city. You decide, the city of Ohio says, we're gonna open up a shelter and you open it up. You have the option, once you sign the MOU, even though the MOU says. You have the primary responsibility to open up that shelter. It's an internal event for the city. You can still call on county resources. Of course, if it's a fire, it's not gonna be Ohio city's responsibility to open that shelter. We're coming with all of these resources in the MOU. So I think when we're talking about internal city, we're talking about an internal, something that happens internally in your city. Probably a much smaller event, you decide, hey, we're gonna open up a shelter. Maybe, maybe you have a gas line explosion in the city. And there's ten homes or fifteen homes and you decide, hey, we're gonna open up a internal shelter. Even even then, once you open it as a city, you can still say, hey, county, we need your help and we're gonna come and help you out.
Yeah, I think, that's, that's where I have the concern, I think, you know, the. Yeah, I think that's, that's where I have the concern. I think, you know, the shelter is going to be a county shelter. And I think like I said, this is unique to Ojai, but it really needs to be reversed to, the county can, you know, it should be primarily responsible. And then let the city know what is needed. But how this is going to, how this will go into effect is when a fire happens, we'll have to figure, you know, the city will have to figure out how to get the shelter. Like that's how, that's what will end up happening at the end of the day. And uh,
Yeah, too, by the way, to take care of people who are probably being evacuated from the unincorporated area, right, which is a much larger area and a much larger number of people than exist inside the city.
Right.
So primary first response that, that we'd be most concerned about, let's be honest, this isn't about funding. This is about our staff, our council and our citizens understanding what the process is when the fire starts or the issue starts and we're responding in an emergency state. We don't want any confusion. We don't want two primary edge entities. I totally appreciate that if we have our own emergency that's so localized in our three square miles, the bedbugs, we'll take care of that and we'll figure it out and that we would call the county second. Totally appreciate that. That makes sense. Or if there was a small flood or things like that. But we're talking about mass shelter, mass care. None of those mass situations are probably, there, I don't even know if one could involve only the city of Ojai. I don't think we have a mass situation inside the city only in, in the history of the city. So we don't want any confusion on our, any level, because let's be honest, right? We're not, if we're all working together, great, but somebody's gotta get to Nordoff, turn the key, get the cots out and get this thing cooking. And we don't want to have to argue about it. We don't want a delay in it. But if it's gotta be us, evacuating people and getting, taking care of people first.
I, yeah, Mayor, I, I, I appreciate all of this, um, minutia, trying to really dial in these fine points, but my take on this is what I just heard, Ojai is gonna be the first responders for Shelter Five, Nordoff High School. If something happens, our trained staff or our trained volunteer staff will go respond.
Yeah.
The second thing that will happen is the county will support us. Okay, if, if it's an Ojai issue, we'll call and ask for support. If it's a county-wide issue, the county will actually step in and help anyway. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
So I think we're ready for a motion uh, to continue the matter for two weeks. Have the city attorney and the city manager go over all the points that have been brought up. Bring it back to us with a recommendation as to whether or not there's language now that actually does what you just said.
And I will, I will second that in, because I think what we're hearing about a true mutual aid, a great, uh, collaborative agreement makes the perfect sense. We just might want to make sure the language is truly parallel and consistent with that.
And I, I, I'd only add that, I, I'm all, I think this is, I, by the way, I think we should sign it. I want to just understand it better. But I do think we need a summary of what our protocols are because we need to know, we have such limited staff. If there's an emergency here, we need to know whether our staff needs to get the shelter open or the county can handle it. And whether, or whether we're operating the E O C and dealing with our residents in the city primarily. Because those first evacuated residents are highly, highly likely to be county residents, not ours. And we're welcome to have you doing it, sheltering them in the city. We just don't know if we're able to open it first. The fire's coming in and we don't have enough people.
And not just the people, it's all the horse trailers and the large animals and everything else.
And this is just an effort for, so there's not confusion in the fog of emergency.
Okay. Well, I think the staff understands what the questions are. The city council will make the decision. Uh, and we'll have two weeks for both the county to work with uh, this city to answer those questions and see if we can come up with the language. Uh, maybe the language is there, it just needs the, the clarification that you're asking for, Ryan. So you can take a look at it in between and see what you think needs to be more clear.
One quick thing, if we don't get this to this in two weeks, if something happens in the next two weeks, what?
It, it's still gonna work. This is not, you know, that, that's.
Want to make sure we're on the same page.
Well, the county might say otherwise, but you know, it's, they're not in total control, nor are we. And we're all gonna do the right thing in the meantime. Uh, I don't think anybody wants to say that we sat on our hands because we didn't have this agreement that's never existed before and we've always dealt with these things. So, uh, and we had enough uh, beating this thing to death and the poor two guys from the county who are staying up with us.
And I really appreciate Stephen and Jeffrey, you're being willing to come and join us tonight.
No, it's, it's been very helpful. Yeah. Stephen, glad to welcome aboard.
Yes. I just wanna, can I add something, Mayor?
Yes, you may.
Uh, don't forget, we have the Ventura County Humane Society based in Ojai. And we, we take animals from everywhere there. You know, I know that some end up on the fairgrounds.
I don't think anyone's forgetting it. And let's not invite the problem to be bigger.
You know, we're, we're, I mean, we're, we're, we have no choice but to work together when there's an emergency. We're going to work together.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, is there uh, any objection to the motion to take this uh, two weeks hence? Uh, anybody on the council like Ryan who, uh, you know, it supports signing it, but wants a little bit of explanation? Uh, we've got two weeks to get that for you.
Yeah, I, I support Ryan being consulted deeply and.
Okay.
Day, I can, I support signing it. I think it's good to look at the language. Definitely support signing it. Yeah.
Well, uh, I'm one who does not support signing it until I know what's in there because the county right now has the primary responsibility and we don't mind sharing it with them. But I don't think you can take, you know, we, we're a junior partner with limited resources. We'll do our share. Now all we gotta do is figure out how to get that into some kind of a mutual agreement.
True mutual aid, right.
I, I agree with that. Okay.
Okay. So thanks, Stephen, thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. Thanks to the guys for.
Just have, uh, like, like we said to the city manager two weeks ago, if you'll just write out what you think it needs to be to make you happy and let us know and we'll get it approved.
Really?
That's what I told him. That's the Ojai influence.
Well, we'd like to say that the county's primarily responsible to open the center and call us and we'll help.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put it down and we'll see what Jeffrey and I could get approved.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Spirit of Ojai here, okay.
Okay, uh, moving right along, council member reports. Uh, do we have it? I'll start with Randy. Do you have anything? Do you?
No, I do.
Bill?
No.
No. Ryan?
Make sure to vote. There's a voting box in front of City Hall if you want to know where it is.
Be sure to vote, wear your mask. Uh, Suzie, do you have anything?
Um, just to clarify, if I want to put something on a future agenda, I don't have to.
That's not the topic. The topic is your report. We'll get to agenda next.
For right now, no.
Okay. Uh, I don't have anything. Uh, so let's uh, now go to the uh, city manager's report.
Yeah, I'm gonna have one brief one just to end on a positive note. The uh, the Mandela begins paint, being painted on October nineteenth. And it'll be uh, being painted for a few days and uh, they're observing COVID uh, requirements, but they're asking people to come out and get involved and help, help do it. So that, that's gonna start next week.
When does that start?
It's October nineteenth at the, and it's at the uh, Libby Park, the uh, at the fountain.
At what time?
Uh, I believe it's ten A M. but let me confirm that. Uh, I'll, uh, we'll post an update. I think it's ten A M. but I'll post a uh, update tomorrow on the website for anybody interested.
Okay.
So glad they're doing this. So glad.
Very good. Now, anybody who wants to help out, I'm gonna pass the hat and give some money to River or uh, minions to do this, cause they don't, they do it for, normally with an honorarium. So anybody who wants to help, give me a call. Uh, okay. Now Suzie, you had some question about something you might like to see on the agenda?
Yeah, but I, I, I mean, I, I can do it later. I'd, I'd rather do it later.
Okay, great. Okay. Is there anything else that, other than what we've already, we're, we're gonna take the mass shelter up next time? We're gonna get some kind of a report, uh, or draft of the ordinance is a good starting point on the reach uh, code. Is there anything else that uh, you need, James?
Fences, hedges, walls, too.
Oh, yeah, fences, hedges, walls. We gotta, okay. So there's.
We'll, we'll work with you.
Okay, well, I think we've done enough for one evening.
Yeah.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.